So to start the October 28th regular session at 7:32. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and if we could have a followed by a moment of silence for Bob Lynch as he worked for the Talon School Systems for about how long, Dr. Willet?
Oh, more than a decade.
And also for the former Board of Ed member Karen Brishano's husband also passed away, Sergeant Stephen Brishano. So I think we should just have a quick moment of silence for both of them. Are you ready with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I am.
Thank you, everyone. And I didn't get to see the kids' waltz. It was not on here.
Did you hear them?
I heard them.
Ah, okay.
Okay.
There they are.
Oh, there they are.
I don't know why I just did that, but that was... That's who you were supposed to be seeing when you heard them. Sorry.
That's great, though. I love having those. Okay, we will move to the approval of the agenda. We are not switching anything or changing anything. I think everything is where it needs to be. We will skip to approval of minutes.
Add something to the agenda?
What would you like to add?
I would like to move to add a discussion at H4... I'm sorry, H5 of making the Zoom participation available to our residents going forward. Like kind of a permanent basis because I think that it's brought a lot of folks into our sphere. So that is a motion.
I'll second it. Karen?
I just wanted to quickly understand what the actual motion is. It's about Zoom participation?
Let me say it again. Because of the increased accessibility for residents, I moved to add H5 to the agenda, a discussion of making Zoom participation a permanent fixture even after we move out of the pandemic status.
Okay. I have a lot of discussion. Anyone else have anything to say? And I have to get my little blue hand up here. Plor is your hand up?
Yeah, it's up. I just think this is probably a discussion for the Policy Committee before it comes here. So I probably wouldn't vote it... Vote to add it to our jam-packed agenda for tonight.
It's just a discussion, but... And it's been seconded, but that's fine.
Rini?
Oh. Yeah, I guess I wasn't... I think I'm just not clear, but maybe it would be cleared up during the discussion. Are we proposing that Zoom be always on even if we were to go back to town council chambers? You know what I mean? I'm not clear on what the discussion is, but maybe that's why we're having a discussion. So.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Tony?
No, never mind. I'll wait till the discussion.
Okay. So this motion is right now to add H5 for discussion on the Zoom participation. So I will go through everyone. Karen?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Plor?
Um, nay.
Jacob?
Aye.
Okay. Griffin?
Nay.
Rini?
Epstein.
And Tony?
Aye.
Okay, I will be an aye as well. Therefore, we'll have H5 Zoom discussion participation on there. Just to keep everybody a reminder that this is going to be a jam-packed meeting. So if we could try to get through all of the materials because I really don't want to be here till midnight tonight. Okay. So we will have that. Now we can move to the approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the October 14th minutes.
It has been approved. Motion to approve.
Ashley, I have a correction.
Okay.
Um, I was gonna say page 21, but all of mine are page 21s. So right before K2, it said that... It's kind of the second to last page. It says that Ms. Plor requested that Dr. Willet have a discussion with the town about the lift it already has. I just wanted to clarify that that was me who said that. So Lisa, if we could just adjust everything in that little paragraph that says Mrs. Plor was actually Ms. Griffin. And I'm sorry, we might have been using first names at the time. So we will try to keep using last names because I think that works better, so.
I do try to say Griffin and Plor, so it could have been me. Okay. Anyone else at this time have any corrections? Okay, we will do the roll call. Karen?
Aye.
Kate?
Sorry, aye.
Plor?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Tony?
Stay.
Okay, and I as well. Oh, and I see Lisa has her hand up. Lisa?
Who was the second?
Um, I believe it was Kate and Plor.
Kate motion?
Yep, and then Plor second.
Got it. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, the motion passes with the October 14th minutes. We will go to public participation, which is a two-minute time limit. Tony will give you 30 seconds. A reminder, he'll do a visual and let you know. And if you could, when you're talking, if you could list your name and your address at first, and then we can go from there. And this time you can raise your blue hand. Karen, your hand went up. I was like, you're gonna get a chance, Karen!
Sorry.
Anyone else from the public? Peter McCann?
All right. I just unmuted myself and turned on my camera, so hopefully you can see me.
Yep, you're good.
Good. So obviously, I emailed a bunch of you, including Dr. Willet, about the back-to-school full-time plan starting on Monday. And I just wanted to understand why the current option of hybrid is no longer an option. I think it's been good for my kids. I have a sixth and an eighth grader that go to the middle school, and they feel comfortable. They feel safe. My son's class, his homeroom class, I believe according to him, there are 17 kids in that right now, so they're required to wear a face shield as well as a mask. But it's the only class that he has to wear the face shield and the mask. The rest of his classes, he's just able to wear his mask. My daughter doesn't have any classes where she has to wear the face shield. But I'm guessing with the full in that that's going to be more of a requirement. And obviously, with safety being the number one concern, I'm just confused why an option that many of us parents in the community feel happy with is no longer an option. And obviously, you know, as soon as I... Like, I remember doing a Google form, a survey explaining. I gave the board praise, the superintendent praise, that the hybrid was working because my kids get to see their teachers, but they also can work from home. And it's not a perfect scenario for sure, but I don't think... I think it's asking us parents to put our kids in a difficult position because either we have to say no, which they're gonna hate us for. And thank you. And we're looking out for their safety, or we have to send them in, and God forbid, you know, if they get sick, then we have to live with that and the repercussions. And I know not many kids are getting sick, but there are kids that are getting sick. So I just wanted to hear the rationale from the board.
Thank you. If you could also just state your address for Lisa?
Yes, 30 Holly Road.
Perfect. Thank you, Peter.
Yep, I'll shut off my mic.
Perfect.
Is it normal that people shut off their cameras, too? I noticed I would seem to be one of very few that had a camera on.
Yeah, no, you can shut your camera off and your mic.
Okay.
If not, Dr. Willet will shut your mic off because of board members. It just kind of goes away. At this time, is there any other public participants that would like to speak at this time? If you could, just leave your name and your address. And if not, we will move on to correspondence. Okay? Okay, at this time, I will close the public participation, and we will move to the correspondence. Tony?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We received an email advocating continually personal in person, writers concerned that this period coming up includes both the Thanksgiving holiday and Halloween holidays, and that families will be gathering. An email concerned with the loss of lunches with the middle school and high school schedules. Author asked for more considerations with the shortening of school days in an attempt to have full in-person classes. Email from a parent upset that the PIP option was being removed. Email requesting that the board be, quote, "sincere in their planned upcoming priority setting." And an email concerned with the removal of the PIP given the potential effect of the upcoming holidays. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Tony. Let's go to points of information. I will open this up to board members to have a say. And Dr. Willet, if you want to respond to anything, you can as well at this time.
Sure. Here, I'm just making sure, adding a few more people to the meeting here real quick. So to Mr. McCann's question, and it's a good one, and understandably so. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear? Okay. You know, it's each of the education option periods that we have, we sit down with a variety... with a number of stakeholders, and we look at a lot of information. And so in making considerations, you know, we take into account considerations from the Eastern Highland Health District, the Department of Public Health, the facilities, staff, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the transportation personnel, and many others. And the meetings have, you know, the main purpose of trying to provide the best options we can within what we can logistically manage. And so there are, you know, the safety is obviously of primary importance. Students' social, emotional, academic health is of primary importance. And, you know, us being able to execute the job and provide a quality educational experience obviously is important. So one of the reasons why we don't offer a multitude of options, and we have to limit it, is that logistically, when working with the staff, it would be very, very difficult to have different modalities of that happening. You know, right now, if we have the four-day in-person, we can provide a quality four-day in-person program, and there are some students attending remotely from an attendance and tracking and even safety perspective. If we're overwhelmed by the logistics of the situation, we're not able to focus as well on the safety and on the execution of the programs we have. So when you're looking for some kids that are there some days and not others, and then it reverses, and there's A-day groups, and then there's B-day groups, and then there's four-day groups, and then there's remote groups, and it's too much for people to handle and handle it well. And so, you know, that came out in a number of discussions. And like I said, I listened to the stakeholders very carefully. This program that we have is, you know, is offered in, and I think offered with the advice of and the input from all of these different groups. And the four-day option provides the benefit of getting kids in front of their teachers many more days while still retaining the remote learning day on Wednesday, which provides extra cleaning time, a break in sort of the exposure. And at the sixth through 12th grade, getting them out on that modified schedule avoids one of the biggest potential issues, which would be having kids of that size and age group and developmental level interacting in that cap. So it provides kids the maximum amount of opportunity and time to be together face-to-face with teachers and other resources like counselors and so on. And it, while trying to mitigate and minimize the risk as much as possible. Out of about 200 records so far submitted, you know, we've had only one COVID situation. And that situation was not, you know, was not interacting with the populations of the school. And so it's, you know, it's a situation where that kind of data plus other data from the district and the county, you know, we're in a very, very good place to be able to provide this four-day in-person education that really is beneficial for kids. When I was talking to the counseling group today, you know, and I have reoccurring meetings with all of our psychologists and counselors, one of the things that was coming out almost universally from that meeting was how beneficial it's been, K5, and how beneficial it is for the kids to be in person and be interacting in person. So, you know, it is, when you sit down and you are able and have the privilege of being able to be in these meetings, it does become very clear, you know, what's most beneficial for the student populations right now, even though it doesn't intuitively feel that way when we're looking at the news. And I completely respect every family's decision that they have to make that decision for themselves and what's right for them. But in these meetings, it became pretty clear what we could execute responsibly and, you know, and what would be most beneficial for the student populations at this time, given the prevalence of the virus in our county, in our town, and in our schools at this moment in time. And it may change a month from now or two months from now, but right now, this was the option that was available to us because of the prevalence in our area. So, I mean, that's the best answer I can give, but I'm happy to follow up further on a one-on-one or in-person with anybody or through a text or a call if desired.
Thank you, Dr. Willet. Let's go to Kate.
So just, I would like to say, in agreement with some correspondence from a resident, this is a question for the board leadership, whether you're planning to hold any board meetings in the middle or high school classrooms. I agree with this resident, and I think this would greatly help the members to understand what being all-in would be like. I think it would be great if we could hold our November 11th meeting in a classroom.
Thank you, Kate. Tony?
Yep, I just wanted to take a moment to, you know, to thank Dr. Willet and the rest of the members of the board and the parents. For those that don't know, for the past three months or so, I have been in Australia doing for work and have just returned as of late Monday, early Tuesday, back home. So while I've attempted to be in as many meetings as I could and still do my duties as a board, I know a few things have had to be picked up by others. And like I said, I just wanted to take this opportunity to voice my appreciation for the help that I know you gave. Thank you.
And welcome back, Tony. It's nice to see your smile over here.
Thank you.
In terms of Kate's question, I know that that was something that we had talked to Dr. Willet about. And the problem is with FOIA, if you don't have public space for enough or public comes, then it becomes an issue in terms of not having the public being allowed in. Therefore, that's why when we had the meeting, we had it in the THS library because the space is available. So if we were to go back to a hybrid or have anything, we'd have to have a larger space in case a public comes because if we shut out any public, then we are in violation.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we could make that a Zoom meeting for the public participation?
You can't just sit there and say, "Public aren't allowed to come." Like, that is a part of the whole FOIA process.
I understand that.
Yeah. Okay. Let's go to the Student Representative Report. Alexandra Costa in summer, Simmer, Greewald.
Hi, everyone. So Student Council had their Mental Health Week this week, and we're continuing it actually to next week so we can get more participation with students. So basically, what we did is we decorated the school with some nice fall decorations. And then we have gift baskets where students can give $1 and up to $5 to purchase these gift baskets, as some of them include blankets and other like self-care things. And the money we get will be donated to the National Alliance on Mental Health. And we've also been doing things with our announcements. We've been having breathing exercises, and eventually, we're gonna have relaxing music being played. And also, this is kind of like a question, but some classes in the high school will be 30 people, and there's not gonna be much social distancing. So it would be good if, like, there could be a plan sent out about how we're gonna sanitize and make sure, you know, everyone's in like a safe area.
So the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors all have PSATs tomorrow, so we're wishing all of them luck. Seniors are gonna be working from home, at your convenience. So we're obviously coming up on like the new pandemic period. Have lunch, like obviously medical students over there. We're all like looking for ways to like host clubs in person. We're thinking, I think what's gonna happen is we're gonna have like a study hall time right after school so that people who want to do like the grab-and-go lunch can stay at school and eat lunch, and then we'll start clubs, I think around like 12:50. And then we've had some concern at our, the high school especially, just kind of people wondering if there's gonna be like more cleaning measures in place for like the new period or the new pandemic like opening period. So if someone could just like touch on that, that'd be great.
Thank you. And just a big reminder to all parents, the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, just charge your calculators for tomorrow. I know my son will be taking that tomorrow. And I think Dr. Willet will be speaking to the cleaning process and things of that nature, correct, Dr. Willet, in your COVID update?
I can give two really quick answers. I lost a little bit of what Alexandra was saying. I don't know if everybody else did, but I lost some of it. But I think what, to answer the questions, the Talon Public School Pandemic Continuity of Learning Plan has, it's like about 100 pages, it has many sections, and it does describe a lot of our operations and how we're addressing issues. And I think the question from Alexandra was about cleaning. And basically, the plan that we have as we enter 612 will give us more time, give us more opportunity to do that kind of cleaning, and give us a greater opportunity for keeping people socially distanced in some of them, in some of the more vulnerable places like the cafeteria, things like that. The PPE in the Department of Public Health has given us guidelines that, you know, with PPE and our tracking, you know, efforts and things like that, we're able to, you know, to provide a safer educational environment while still in classrooms having kids being a little bit, you know, closer to each other or closer to each other than, say, the CDC's. The, you know, guidelines, the DPH on the EHHD have both, you know, approved our plan. And I ran it by the Eastern Highland Health District as well with the details. And they, you know, that's one of the considerations I do when we're going into it. I asked the EHHD, is this gonna be a situation that would be, you know, would be advisable or approved? And I did receive the, you know, the response that this would be, for the time that we're in, a reasonable approach. And so, you know, that all plays into the process. I definitely would not do it without checking with those, you know, those official groups to make sure that we would be doing something that, you know, to make sure that we're doing something that's reasonably safe.
Thank you, ladies, and thank you, Dr. Willet. Let's move on to Summer Tons Report, H1, COVID Update.
Okay, so COVID update, you know, again, when I, we published the agenda on a Friday, so the information available at that time was as follows, although there are, there's updates to this. You know, I don't think the, we have not received the most recent EHHD report as that will come out again, probably at the end of the day on Tuesday, as I recall. But I, each week, I'll update that. In this case, the most recent update prior to our meeting has, for us, 137 community submissions, 31 submissions. We did have four that we recorded that were positive COVID cases. There were no in-school close contacts, and three of those cases were remote learners that hadn't had any contact at all in the schools, but had had contacts outside of the schools. And so what we're finding, interestingly enough, and what the DPH is also talking about, is that it tends to be the outside contacts, not necessarily what's happening within schools, but more what's happening outside of schools. And the, and those, that is what is affecting most of the school systems where they are affected, is that it has to do with something that occurred outside of the district or outside of the school system or building. So it hasn't affected us, and we haven't had the impacts that we've seen, say, in some of the other areas. This particular district with the cooperation of the families and the community has been wonderful. I mean, honestly, the families are working really, really closely with the school system with respect to, you know, following up and respecting our tracking and everything that, you know, we're doing in our phone calls. So the community's really been cooperating and working hard to keep everybody safe. The numbers for the county, as you recall, you know, the county has the 10 out of 100,000 thresholds for a seven-day rotation in order to move to, say, a hybrid. And, you know, we're not, we're not really near that at this time with respect to our county. Other things can cause that, though. You know, there can be individual town, or there can be individual school impacts. The town, the state of Connecticut just introduced its Red Alert Program. So you'll notice that, you know, it has highlighted communities that it felt, you know, as a town are headed in a, in a direction that's concerning. Talon is not one of those towns, and there are a series of towns around us that are similar. There are some other towns that are now on the alert list for the state of Connecticut, but Talon isn't one of them, and some of our neighbors are also in a similar, similar place. So we are still in a good place right now, both as a county, as a town, and as a district. This data is updated. I usually will put it up on the blog weekly, but it gives you a sense of, you know, where things are and where things are headed in our community and some of the other towns within the Eastern Highland Health District. So this information is generalized to many different towns. What I've done, too, is taken a look at the data from our ed options to provide a little bit of an idea on what our, you know, what our signups were and what the proportion of learners are that are remote. At this point, as of midnight on October 26th, for the grade K through 2, we have an 8.2% remote learner population. You can see the numbers here. It's about 10 kids in kindergarten, 14 in first grade, 15 in second grade. The TIS school, grades 3, 4, 5, you know, 14, 17, and 18 respectively. It's about 49 or 11% of that school. Remote learners for grades 6, 7, and 8, that would be 23, 22, and 28 for those grades. That's about 13% of that school population. And the high school, the remote learners are, you know, grade 9, 10, 11, 12, 14, 29, 25, and 24 for 92 total, about 12% of that population. So, you know, there are some straggling numbers here. You know, TTA, for instance, some of those programs that are very small, they may not be in the number, but that's two or three kids in some of the smaller programs. So this is the vast majority of the school's programs, and within those buildings, the percentages. So it gives you that sense that, you know, you're at about 88% to 92% capacity, and most people are coming back for the four-day. So that's, that's a basic update for COVID. You know, I'd be happy to answer any of the board's questions and provide any other, any other information than I can.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Willet, for putting this together. At this time, do any board members have any questions? Let me just get my little blue thing back up. Griffin?
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Dr. Willet, for putting all this together. I am, I'm glad that we're able to go in for the four days for 6 through 12. I think it's gonna be important to get them as much face-to-face time as we can. I do have some concerns about the asynchronous Wednesdays. I'm wondering if there's a way, at least for 6 through 12, or really more specifically for 9 through 12, if we can have more synchronous learning with the teachers perhaps in the building on Wednesdays and live streaming their classes the way that, I guess basically the way they had been for the half the class, for the hybrid. So I'm just wondering if that would be possible, especially if they're getting out at 10:45 specifically. So I'm just wondering if um, that would be possible, especially if they're getting out at ten forty-five specifically for the high school. You know, um, what additional resources would the cleaning crew need in order to um, be able to maybe get this done from eleven o'clock on, um, so that the deep cleaning would be done? Cause I just, um, again, I'll just reiterate, I, I'm concerned especially with the high school because their classes are gonna be over in mid-January, the third week of January, and they've lost a fair amount of kind of instruction time already with uh, for the first quarter. So I'd just like to see them get a little bit more um, synchronous instruction. Thank you.
Um, do you want me to kind of respond to each of the questions in kind or wait?
Yeah, no, you can respond. That way, if there's any other further questions, she can ask them and then we can move on.
Okay, so I, um, so a couple of things. I did, uh, I did, you know, I, we have been looking at, constantly evolving how we offer things and, and what we offer. Um, I did talk to the administrative unit in, in one of our meetings. Um, we are doing an, you know, uh, overview of the Google classrooms. Uh, each of the administrators is going through and you know, taking a look at um, what's being provided on the, on the Wednesdays. So we're in a, we're in a process of sort of evaluating where we are for our uh, remote slash asynchronous Wednesdays. Um, and I expect to have the results of that maybe ten days or so as we get through it, maybe a few more days than that as, as we complete that um, process of just kind of doing a sample. Um, we know intuitively and we know from some of the other experiences what's going on, but we're, we're doing a specific kind of sample of them over the next ten or so days. Um, having said that, um, you know, they do have, and in many places are kind of using some of the synchronous video and doing some of these meetings, um, in maybe not all populations every time. But when I asked about it, um, I wasn't getting a lot of feedback that there was a feeling that that wasn't happening. So we're gonna be doing a, that ten-day piece just to kind of see. Um, in terms of uh, additional resources for cleaning crews to have them start at eleven, one of the things that came up in a reoccurring, you know, reoccurring in our meetings was that, and again, I listen to the stakeholders, I ask what they need so that we can execute a program that's the most safe um, and the most effective and logistically, uh, the most possible. And um, you know, I get that with, right now, you know, with what we have, uh, we really can't do that and do a, do the job of cleaning that we're expected to do, you know, and keep within the guidelines of the state. Uh, I suppose additional resources, there are no physical additional resources that we would need. We would have to probably increase our staff by fifty percent, or maybe even a hundred percent if you figure that we're gonna lose three or four hours of their cleaning time in order to do that. So the only equation that, you know, we could do there would be to increase the, the staff so that we could move through that much more quickly. Um, you know, and that, that obviously, it has some constraints to it. So um, you know, we're gonna be looking at it, we're gonna be, you know, kind of going through that in the next ten um, or so days, you know, looking at those uh, Google Classroom lessons, um, and the admin have been working um, with the staff. Um, so, you know, I wasn't getting back that this was a, a, you know, widespread issue, and I think we'll be able to, you know, continue to evolve that Wednesday day um, and look at that, that data and, and those results of that ten-day kind of uh, review and see where we go from there. But it is a constantly evolving process, and we're always looking for ways to, to make things more engaging while keeping the structure that is keeping us safe and in place.
Anything else, Griffin?
You're good.
Um, yeah, I actually, I'll just throw it out there, uh, Dr. Willett, I don't know if it's an option to hire um, some of the student part-time workers, the summer custodians, just throwing that out there, they're cheaper labor, if you will, that perhaps, um, you know, they could, they could help out on the Wednesdays, at least in the, the two schools, but that's just a, just an idea.
Yeah, it's, it's not a bad one. I, I appreciate that. We have uh, added to what's called LTS, like the kind of subs that we bring in right now, um, similar to what you're asking, but um, you know, I mean, we could definitely take a look and we'll continue to look at anything. We just, we also want to make sure our, our bottom line is still coming in where we need it to be at the end, and um, you know, it is, it, we will always be looking and continue to look for ways to, to kind of make things as efficient as possible, for sure.
Great. This is a great case for our COVID emergency fund, so we'll uh, we'll see if we need uh, any more of that money, so. All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Ashley.
Thank you. Let's go to Jacob.
Okay, so first just to, wanna thank all the staff and the teachers and the students and parents for following guidelines and keeping our school district as healthy as it is. I think that's um, certainly merited. Um, I, I didn't know if we were gonna make it this far with in-person learning, but we have, and that's, that's excellent. I did have a question about something you said, Dr. Willett, about um, something the Department of Public Health had going about their, is it like a red zone or, or something like that, that is like a trend? Um, I think towns are going in a wrong direction. Could you just elaborate a little bit more on that, what the standards are for that?
Yeah, the state of Connecticut has uh, identified a, you know, a, a new methodology where they're going to be um, looking at things on the town, on the town level. Um, they re-released what's called Addendum Four, and so um, I posted that, um, you know, um, updating that in our plan. It was released a few days ago. And essentially, instead of just uh, using the county, they're also using the town and proportion of population in towns to uh, to identify whether they feel like there's uh, there's a problem, you know, uh, brewing in a, in a specific town. And they may then uh, provide an alert, I think they called it a red alert for uh, a town that looks like its numbers are increasing and that there's a, uh, there's a, you know, a need to say for that town uh, provide more uh, protective measures. So a town now, if it reaches a certain level of prevalence for its population, um, and I think they're still doing it in the uh, you know, the kind of tens. If they, uh, if they reach a certain prevalence now, they will go into uh, a more protective mode with respect to restaurants, um, the number of people that can be, you know, in a space at a certain time, those sector rules that the state has put out. Um, they will recommend adjusting those sector rules for a smaller uh, area such as a town municipality. Uh, and then um, you know, try to be more proactive and protective that way. So Addendum Four should have the uh, more of that information, and I'll be posting it. And I think most of us are just trying to wrap our heads around what that could mean, you know, in execution if a town goes into a certain status. What's a little confusing about it is that there's still a, a more uh, I don't know how to word this, you know, the best possible way, but um, schools within the town are still given um, more leeway within those uh, those constraints. And the reasoning that they gave for that in the last DPH meeting was that they felt that the schools at this point um, had plans and were more aggressively on top of situations than your average municipality was. So they were a little more, um, they are, they're going to be uh, a little more um, lenient on schools with respect to their hard numbers than they, than they will say on a municipality as a whole, which sometime, it doesn't seem to make an intuitive sense, but from a scientific point of view and from a data point of view to them, it does. So I'm not criticizing them. I'm saying that sometimes, you know, uh, if you're not involved with the hour meetings, you know, they go hour or two-hour meetings that happen, it does not sound like that makes sense. But they're relying on, you know, the level of the, the entity to respond effectively. And at this point, my impression of what they were saying was, the schools are in a position where they're doing uh, so much of this that they, they're, they will be a little bit, and give a little bit more leeway to a school before a health district will recommend shutting down a school, even if the town is going into a more protective zone as a larger, you know, sort of uh, unit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Um, just to follow up on that, Dr. Willett, I just had a quick question, um. As you're saying that, you know, if the schools have to shut down, as if the cases go up, um, would it just depend on how many cases, whether we would go back to hybrid or to remote? Like, um, how does that decision take place? Is that just, like, is it a numbers game, or what, what goes into?
It's a, it can, it can come from a, a variety of factors. I mean, if we do exceed that um, level of um, you know, ten to twenty, if you had, go into that zone on a seven-day average, as the primary indicator say, um, of above ten every hundred thousand in a, in a seven-day rotation or average, although I think they're moving the average up to a, a larger number of days, but um, then, then they are recommending you go into hybrid, for instance, for ten to twenty-five, and then beyond twenty-five, they're recommending you go into remote. And um, you know, what would happen at that point is if we got to a place like that, um, I would consult with the Eastern Highland Health District, and essentially, I as a superintendent will likely never go against something that the Eastern Highland Health District is telling me to do or, or telling me is the situation. If they felt like, you know, we needed to go into a hybrid situation in order to uh, safely mitigate um, the, the current conditions, then um, I think it would be, uh, it would be very uh, difficult and unadvisable for then a superintendent to say, I really don't care what you say, uh, health district, I'm gonna do whatever I want. So um, it, it relies very heavily on, on where the health district will fall with respect to how it views the, the status. And if it goes above, say, ten every hundred thousand, then you are in that hybrid status, and it would likely mean that we would head into that partial in-person model as a district again. Above twenty-five, that would mean we'd probably be heading into remote learning for the entire district again. And it, and if that was how the state was trending, the whole state might do a similar thing once again. So it's um, it's gonna rely on that, but it's not only that. It could also be that if there's a population of students within a school system that ends up uh, being, you know, COVID positive or, or there are a number of close contacts, that can send a large population of a district also out on a quarantine situation. Um, so, you know, if uh, if five kids that, you know, five kids were COVID positive and they had interactions with many, many other kids, that could uh, put a number of children out um, on a quarantined status for fourteen days, and that could put an entire team out, it could put a, it could have put a class out, it could put a team out, could put a grade out, could put a school out. Um, so it, there can be an effect on a school district that um, can be rather large, even if it doesn't show that kind of prevalence for the uh, the county, um, you know, or the, the municipal area. So uh, it, it really has to do with the, the local circumstances, meaning the school system's population circumstances, as well as the county. Those are the two big things that would probably drive what happens.
Thank you. Let's go to Plord.
You pretty much just answered my question. I just want to clarify one thing, cause I remember in tracks this summer, the primary indicator was the threshold ten to twenty-five for the county. Is that, has that been changed with this red alert to, by town? Like, if we look at Talon and we're at ten per one hundred thousand over the course of seven days or fourteen, whatever they changed it to, is that what moves us in and out of hybrid, or is it still the county level?
It's both now, you know, but, but um, they, they give a little bit more leeway to school systems within a town. It's just adding another layer and a further uh, a further dis, you know, kind of disaggregation. So in a county, if a town is having pretty bad experience, then the, they're saying now they will give a, a, what they call, I believe, a red alert status to that town, and that will affect things, and it'll depend on why that town got that red alert status. So it's actually more like adding another layer. It's not taking away the, the prevalence indicators that were there before. It's kind of adding a new layer to that. So uh, I was gonna see, I think I've got Addendum Four up here. This was the most recent version of Addendum Four, and it talks about how, you know, you've got the metric for the leading indicators and secondary indicators. But the updated Addendum Four will explain how these metrics are used, but also go into, I believe, um, I have to go back and kind of get back to that prelink part here. But it also will talk about its um, or allude to its new processes with respect to the um, the towns. And so if they haven't done that in this one, they're, they probably added it to the DPH site, but they, they, you know, the state did report out on that fairly recently, I think Governor Mole, um, Lamont, sorry, did a, um, did a public release on this uh, new red alert, um, town-by-town kind of plan. And they are expanding, I think, their average metrics to provide a fourteen-day period, and there were some changes. Um, but it's hard sometimes to track everything because I know they, they had changed even travel advisories, but then they changed again, I believe. So I have to go back and look, um, sometimes even day-to-day to see, you know, how things have readjusted. But to go back to the base of your question, it's not eliminating that, it's kind of adding another layer.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Let's go to Kate.
Um, couple comments and then a couple questions. Um, the Wednesday cleaning day um, or the asynchronous learning is one of the primary reasons that we have been able to stay open. Um, and both of my children have had multiple meetings and synchronous learning activities and opportunities on Wednesdays. I just want to say that as a Board of Education, we should be asking how to support teachers, staff and students in the move to improve the quality of virtual learning and increase student engagement, and not asking for more in-person time. Hiring more folks to do more cleaning will be pointless if an outbreak occurs. Wearing masks and now shields all day long is absolutely exhausting for teachers and students, not to mention the challenge balancing the technological requirements of providing for in-person students and remote learners. Wednesday gives everybody a little breathing room, literally, figuratively, actually. I'm extremely worried that the middle and the high school students will not be able to maintain the necessary social distance, given the size of classrooms and the number of students returning to for, to school four days a week. Schools that have been fully in-person have been able to stay open because there has been between twenty to thirty percent of the student population electing to stay remote. Dr. Willett's numbers here show us about ten percent, putting our average class sizes around twenty-two to twenty-three students, which is a lot of students. Um, so I, I'm really worried about that. I just want to put that out there. Um, the question that I have um, is, I heard something on NPR, and then I'm just talking with other folks that are in this, this um, in this realm, and I'm just wondering if uh, the DPH has looked at using, testing at wastewater, uh, at Yukon, like testing the wastewater to see, you know, like what the indicator could tell us about what's happening with, with our area? That's my question.
I don't.
No, okay.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
I, I don't know the answer to the wastewater question. Um, I uh, I'll have to look into that, um, so I'll ask, but um, um, you know, the, in to try to cover, swing back around, the, the DPH talks about a series of mitigation strategies, um, and so does the EHHD or Eastern Highland Health District. And so the rationale is that if you have a, a series of these strategies in place, if you don't have the ability to social distance, you know, say at the six feet per person, um, you know, level, that, you know, you, you, if you have the other mitigations in place, um, it can make up for that. You know, it can, uh, it can help balance that out. And that's the, that's the why and why, um, you know, these, these organizations will, will not, uh, you know, will not say you cannot be in school for, you know, four days or five days or whatever. They will, uh, generally, if the mitigations are in place, they will support being in school more often. The reason for that is that this, you know, that, that the kids um, not being in school, there are many, many factors that, that put kids at a, at a significant risk level for many, many things when they're not in school um, as often as possible. And so that's what I think the EHHD and DPH and others are balancing here. They're saying, you know, right now, the vast majority of illness will not be COVID. I mean, the way we look at it and the way things are kind of, you know, playing out in the news, um, that's not true everywhere, but it is true for where we are right now geographically. And so because the vast majority won't be COVID, um, you know, it makes, it makes sense to, to mitigate the other impacts of of not being in school, you know, bringing kids in school uh, more often and with the highest frequency we can. It helps mitigate the emotional, social, emotional, and even, even health-related things that impact them if they're not in school. Um, right now, you, you have to make a, generally not, I'm not saying you, but I think they, the EHHD, the DPH, superintendents, others, all the stakeholders there that are looking at this, you know, the decision has to be which of these two things is more perilous for um, for the, the adolescent and child population. Right now, the more perilous thing of the two, um, even though it does not feel like it makes sense when I say this, when you look at national news and what some of the other places are trending as, but for our area, for our school system and this region, right now, the more risky thing is not having them in school. They are at more peril from not being in school than being in school the maximum number of days possible. So, um, you know, keep. So keeping in mind the kinds of things that would control the spread or try to do that within reason. So that's why EHHD, DPH, and others will support it and say that when mitigations are in place, if that one mitigation can't be achieved, if these others are being done, that they will endorse or say that we can be in, for instance, four days all in. So it is not an easy thing. I understand it's hard to process and it's an upsetting situation. And my heart is with people for that. I have children too, and I understand. But we're all trying to make the decisions that we feel are in the best interest of the kids. And we're just going to have to get through this difficult time. So I definitely appreciate the perspectives on it 100%.
Anything else, Kate?
I'm just curious, yeah, thank you. I'm just curious if there's any plans to do any kind of regular testing at schools. I'm guessing not because I haven't heard about it, but I didn't know if there's something different in Talon County versus Hartford County.
I know that they're making available some of these rapid tests. And I'm waiting to see how that plays out. We've looked at whether we wanted to get the rapid tests or not. But the problem with it, well, two problems. One, we may not be a priority district to get that. That may be more the cities and certain higher-density population areas. But the other issue is that the rapid test is not accurate as well. The PCR test is far more accurate. So there are a number of concerns with the rapid test with our kind of situation in a school system. It could be useful for certain people in certain populations that are, in my opinion, not schools. But if the rapid test comes up with false positives or not false negatives, then its level of use to us is not super high. So I think we just have to, I don't think we'd have them made available to us anyway. But I want to see how that's going to go in other places before we put all our eggs in that basket in Talon. Right now, we follow the DPH and EHHD guidance, which is if there's COVID-like symptoms, we require a PCR test or an alternative diagnosis from a doctor, or the student has to stay out for the 10 days, which gives the time period for the virus to extinguish itself. So following those protocols seems to be very effective right now for us. And I wouldn't want to kind of put our eggs in a panacea that really does not have the effectiveness that we want it to.
Thank you very much.
Let's go to Karen.
Yeah, Dr. Willett, thank you. I have appreciated your slow, measured, data-driven approach to before and during reopening efforts. I am still concerned about the high school and middle school class sizes because we do have, like Kate said, more kids going back in. However, I will just say that the Wednesday remote cleaning day has given me pause to appreciate that because I know that many other districts have not done it that way, and they are five days a week. So I think that, given the circumstances, that I do appreciate having that Wednesday for cleaning. I know there's still some, well, I don't know. I guess that's my question. Is there still some staffing challenges as far as filling some positions? I know you said you were looking at temps and things or subs for custodians. And I'll just say that using kids for cheap labor, I'm not in favor of because I don't think you want my teenager cleaning the schools.
So I'm sorry, the first.
Staffing challenges?
Yeah, the first part broke up for me a little, and I apologize. So we do have, you know, we are in a better place than we were. And we're constantly working to continue to stay on top of it. We're doing okay right now. That can change very quickly. If we turn in prevalence and some of the adults are affected, that could very dramatically affect our ability to operate. And so right now, we are doing okay from a staffing perspective. And we are constantly filling the positions that people have. If people have decided they'd rather do something else, we're in the hiring process. We have hired a number of people to cover the positions that were vacated. And I have a feeling we'll continue to be doing that. As we get through the year, people may change their mind about working in education. There's a feeling about who's a first responder and who should get the vaccines first and second and third and fourth. And I think as that evolves and people get a sense of how safe they feel in the environment working, that can affect who stays in the jobs and in the positions and who wants to leave and things like that. So right now, we're managing and we're providing a safe and effective program. But those things can change, so we'll continue to stay on top of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's go to Rini next.
Thank you. So just a couple of very quick comments. I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Willett. I appreciate all the time and effort you've put into just endless meetings, research, and trying to sift through and come up with the best solution for the kids and for the staff. Trying to make everybody happy is not an easy assignment. So I do appreciate all of that that you've taken on. I just want to reiterate, and I know I've already kind of reached out to you on this a little bit, but I just wanted to say, I have been said several times about concern about loss of time that the students have had in school and so forth. And this new program, I love that they're going to have more face time with the teachers. That's great. Still a little concerned about more loss of instruction time. And just kind of wanted to say, I understand what Griffin was saying about the Wednesdays because I have heard other residents kind of comment about Wednesdays kind of not being very fulfilling. Or that's not the right word, but as great as they could be or the kids are kind of done real quickly. So I would be very supportive of measures that you're taking to evaluate that and see if we can't do synchronous, at least for a couple hours in the morning or something, what can be done to continue to make that really a good experience for the kids and make it enriching. So that's really just, I wanted to throw that out there.
I understand.
Okay. Let's go to Tony.
Yeah, Dr. Willett, again, I certainly like and appreciate all the work that your staff is doing. This has been incredibly difficult, and it's nothing short of amazing coming out of these schools. Rini brought a good question to mind. And I know I'm asking assumptions here, but what is that next step? If numbers stayed the same and this worked out, is the plan to stay at the four-day indefinite? Or is there another level up?
Well, then, thank you for asking the question. The Talon Public School Pandemic Continuity of Learning Plan currently has another level that is more in-person than this one. It's a five-day. And so there is a step that you could go to as a district beyond the four-day. What it would take to get us there, I think, would be some very significant shifts within the districts around us and also would require, obviously, our prevalence to stay at least the same for the span of time that we're in. So there is another level up from the four-day, and it's the five-day. You do, in that level, trade away that Wednesday as a remote day and as a cleaning day. And so that's a pretty big shift for us. So we would have to see the prevalence at least staying the same or going down around us. The availability of a vaccine could obviously send us into the five-day if it were distributed and some time had gone by and people were feeling good about it and the trends were moving in a very positive direction around us in our county and locally. So that is, there is one step above where we are right now.
Okay. And make no mistake, I am in no hurry to move away from the four. I personally think the four is a pretty good plan. I just wanted to understand the side picture. Thank you, sir.
You, Tony. Plord, I see your hand. Is that a new one or is that?
No, it's a new one. I just wanted to say, I've talked to a lot of people about the Wednesdays. As a working parent, for a kindergartner, I personally like the Wednesday asynchronous. It's easy for him to go to his old daycare, part of our inner circle, so we're not increasing our risk going somewhere else. The struggle is, for me, if there was synchronous learning, she's screen-free. So I tend to do his work at night or in the morning or on the weekend when we can do it. So that would be, I think, the struggle in the K through five if it went to synchronous. I think other districts, I do know one teacher has done synchronous learning. He's a high school teacher from home. He's had office hours and Google meets or whatever. So I don't know if something could be done there at the higher grades if we feel there's a disconnect. But I do like the Wednesdays. I think if we look at other districts, there's quarantines, there's shutdowns, there's this and that. And it is inevitable that we will have cases in town. And so I think that the Wednesdays have been part of our success. And I attribute that to Dr. Willett's meetings that have been on with the COVID team, as the meeting's called, and listening to everybody and what their opinions are. But then I do agree with loss of learning time. I mean, I think COVID in general just has caused the loss of learning time all around. So the more learning time we can get, obviously, the better. But thank you, Dr. Willett, for everything. That's my two cents on the Wednesdays. Oh, and if we did hire kids to come in and clean the high school, I fully would trust them, I think, then they've worked there before.
Let's go to Kate.
I just need to say, regarding the Wednesday, Dr. Willett, do we have any input from the school administration, students, and teachers about how Wednesdays are going? We seem to be citing anecdotal and random screening, sampling from people. And I'm just wondering if we actually have any evidence about which to make assumptions about Wednesday? No, then the answer is no. But this person told me, or I think this, or whatever. I mean, that's not productive for our conversations here. We should be looking at the entire district and not just what our random friends say to us.
When I talk to the administrators about this exact issue, and we are in a constant process of evaluating program and how we're doing things and so on. I made an explicit conversation with the administrators, not only prior, but also very recently. The administrators, in the report that I got back, they are not reporting that they are receiving many complaints about the asynchronous remote Wednesdays. The information I got back from the administrators was that these were fairly positively received. And that, as has been noted in the meeting, there are feelings about the asynchronous as well. There are families that feel that they need it to be that way on Wednesdays and that it's something that they appreciate because of the timing and the availability of technology in the family's homes and how much sharing they have to do in their own homes. So people feel very strongly about this in the communities in various ways. But what I got back from admin was that they weren't hearing many complaints at all, actually, and that they felt like it was going fairly well. But I think it makes sense for us to do a sort of quasi-qualitative, qualitative sort of review of a series of randomly selected little classrooms and just see how it's going. Again, I think the teachers are doing an amazing job. And I think it's typical for us. We would normally, as administrators, be walking into classrooms and visiting with teachers. So we're just kind of virtually doing that. But after about 10 days, I should get their feedback on those randomly selected rooms, so to speak. And we should be able to have some additional information about how that's going. So I expect that we'll just keep on that horse and continue to keep reviewing it.
Okay. I just wanted to remind the Board of Education that we should be asking ourselves how to support teachers, staff, administration, and students and how to move, improve, I'm sorry, and how to improve the quality of virtual learning and increase student engagement and not just passively pushing for more in-person time because that seems to be the mode here. So I'm annoyed that we're not listening to the teachers and to the administrators and what's happening in the schools. That's it.
Anything else, Kate? Let's go to Griffin.
Do you think maybe we could hear from the students since they have their hands up?
I think they do, but I'm going down the list.
Board members have already had their chance, Ashley. Let's, you know, for the one who said, "Let's move the meeting along."
We are going to move the meeting along, Karen. And I'm sorry, but all other board members have had second times. Griffin gets her second time, and then we can hear from the students. But thank you, Griffin.
Thank you, Ashley. I just wanted to clarify that I am not looking to have in-person Wednesdays. I am strictly just asking, Dr. Willett, if there's a way we can enhance Wednesdays, I think that was a word that we used, for our remote learning. So that's exactly what I'm kind of asking, is what can we do for our students to enhance their remote learning Wednesdays? And is synchronous an option? So I just wanted to clarify that because I think there was some confusion that I might have been asking to get the students in school on Wednesday, and that's not what I was going for. So thank you, Ashley.
Okay, thank you. If we can have Sumer and Alexandra next up. There you go.
As someone who's like a student and actually part of this, Wednesdays for me so far have just been really relieving. Teachers do assign work on that day, and they answer the emails really fast if we have any questions. And it's a good way for us to get a break because it's really hard to learn when you really can't do group work and you have masks on all the time. And it's a good mental health break for me, especially for kids in high school because we're going through college stuff, we're taking AP classes. And it's just, we're kind of pushed into wearing a mask, doing social distancing. So I feel like the Wednesday is like a good thing that we get lighter work because we need that mental health break. And I believe that everyone deserves it, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of go with that. I'd say the same. I also know that most of my teachers, at least, always are holding what they're calling office hours. So if we want to have synchronous work with them or just time with our teachers, they're always available. And then it's also been really helpful. I'm a part of the B-group, so it's been helpful to catch up on stuff because working at home isn't always the most productive. So having that time for asynchronous, where I don't have to be online at any certain time, has really given me the opportunity to do other things. Like today, I had tutoring with someone, like I was tutoring today. I had more time to do things that I.
Happy to entertain them and to answer everything that I can. So this presentation also includes a little of Board of Ed participation so that I can give you kind of a perspective on how some of the conversations go. Before I get into exactly what we're doing, I want to cover the whys and the whats. Sorry, hold on.
Not me? Is that you?
It's my computer telling me that it needs to be restarted. So I'm praying that it doesn't need to be restarted right now.
It's good to know that because I'm like, is my battery dying? I'm not getting a message.
I end up disappearing. I think one of you becomes the host and just go with it, okay?
Sounds good.
But in any case, so there'll be a little bit of participation, but it gives you a sense of. you a sense of the why and the what. So the first part of the presentation is the, you know, the why and the what. And then the next part of the presentation is, is what's happening right now in town. So as, as per, you know, any effort in culturally responsive education or any kind of education of the kind, you know, these are ongoing efforts. They, they never end. It's not like there's an endpoint to it. It's a, it's a constant state of, of moving forward, constantly putting programs down, getting, you know, expert advice, input, and, and then going back and reevaluating. We're not always going to do things right. You know, that's, that's part of the process in growth. Part of the process in growth is beginning to understand ourselves better, beginning to understand our institutions and our structures. And then, you know, reviewing them in a constant state of review to see how we can continue to evolve, how can, you know, how we can continue to make the program better, more inclusive, you know, and move from, you know, a state of, say, tolerance to a state of actively trying to change, you know, how things work in favor of children, in favor of the, the country and in moving education forward. So the, the what and the why of culturally responsive education, I'll cover just, just in the first five minutes. So as I said, you know, it's a process of fundamentally understanding things, you know, trying to get a constant better understanding of how people feel, what their background experiences are, what their lived experiences are. And then, you know, look at it, implement programs to address it, and then reflect on those programs. How are they working? How are people experiencing them? And then once again, going back into the cycle of, of, you know, coming to a better understanding, then re-implementing, and again, going into reflection. So it's never like there is an end. It's always a constant, constant process. So before I go any further, just really, really quick, and if you know what this is, do not say it. If you are aware, because some of you have already seen this and we've already done some of that, but if you, if you don't know what it is, tell me what you think this is. Maybe raise your blue hand if you're a board member and, you know, unless Miss, I'm Miss Longring, and you could include anyone you wanted, but that's, you know. What do you think it is? There is no wrong answer. You will not, do not Google it. You cannot Google it. That is not fair. Anybody-
I was going to say Secret Service earpiece.
All right, all right. That's Secret Service-
If we know, we're not supposed to say?
No, because that, that, no, because you might have already, you know, we might have already done that. But if you know, don't say. But if you don't know-
I haven't done anything with it, but, okay.
Any other thoughts on it? I see some shaking of heads. Just, just throw out there anything. There's no wrong answers.
Okay, I gotta say, Tony was looking at this like quite, I wish I had a screenshot of that one.
It, it looks like an electrical lead.
An electrical lead, okay.
I think it looks like an eraser wheelie thing or something, but then I don't know what the blue stuff is on the top. So, I don't know.
I was going to go with wheel, but I agree, I don't know what the blue fringy stuff is.
A wheel. All right, so let's take some of those. You know, a Secret Service earpiece, got that. An electrical lead, an eraser thing, which I think was, you know, was good, and a wheel, you know, a wheel. So what this actually is, is a typewriter eraser. It's a monument in Washington DC. You can see it on the mall. And one of the reasons it's there is that it is something that most people of a certain generation are unfamiliar with. You did the erasing with the part that looks like a wheel and you brushed off the, you know, the remnants of what you erased with the, I think the, it was described as the blue thingies on the top. So that is a typewriter eraser. But sometimes we'll use this kind of presentation or this kind of example to give a idea of what bias can be. You know, it doesn't mean that you're biased against the, this object. It just means that your mental models, your schemas, you know, your lived experiences, the things you've experienced in your life, what you've learned about, you brought that to bear on your analysis of what this object was. And so, you know, Tony looking at it as an electrical lead because he's an engineer and, you know, others looked at it as a, as a wheel and things like that, you know, that is your mental model of what that is. You're not aware of what this actually is. So, you know, as you get more experience and you learn more about, say, typewriters or typewriter erasers, you're able to identify the object for what it actually is. But before you can do that, you're bringing in your own lived experiences to do that. And sometimes our own lived experiences do not give us enough information to make an accurate portrayal of a thing. And we do the same thing with human beings. You know, if we don't have a lot of experience with people that don't, you know, that are, that are different or have a different background than us, we can make false, you know, we will naturally draw impressions of people from things like media or other things that will not be accurate, just like we will look at an object and see it as a Secret Service earpiece or see it as a wheel or something like that. They're inaccurate. They're not, they're not ridiculous observation, but they're inaccurate. And so we do that to people. So one of the starting points for it is that just recognizing that human beings organize information. If a object or a person comes, you know, into our, you know, sensory area, we will automatically analyze that object or that person. That is what our brains do. And we will automatically bring into it our lived experiences to process that. The, the tough part about Connecticut right now with its school systems are that they're very segregated. So our students do not really have a really good understanding of each other. They bring into the picture of what they think of each other, what they perceive it from movies or media or things like that. And those, those, those kinds of ways of, you know, processing the information that are natural to all human beings will lead to misinterpretations and misunderstandings of what people are actually like. So the, the purpose of this responsive education model is to make sure that we reflect ourselves on our own thinking processes, that we approach people, understanding the human propensity to misunderstand each other based on limited information. So when we talk about culturally responsive education, one of the first things we have to talk about is how the human brain works and how bias works. Bias is a natural part of our human thinking. It is how we experience the world and what we bring to bear on, on how we understand other people and other things. So it doesn't make a person evil because they have bias. We essentially all have bias. And so being able to overcome that means actively thinking about that, questioning our own perceptions, questioning how much experience we have with something before we cast a judgment about a thing or a person. And so that is part of the training of culturally responsive education is to say, hold on, take a minute, is this really, are we accurately seeing this for what it is? Do we have all the information to be able to make an informed decision or judgment about this, this person? And so it gets people thinking about that. So we talk about, you know, Pia J, we talk about Sengay, talk about the availability heuristic, you know, human beings tend to jump to conclusions that are fast conclusions and not necessarily, you know, deeply processing it. It kept us alive when we were cave people because when you saw a bear, you saw the bear and you knew the bear would like, you know, come after you. But it does not help us in our modern age as much because we're still making those fast, quick impressions that we naturally do as human beings. But, you know, that doesn't always give us the correct impression of what that individual, you know, is about. So it just asks people to constantly be reflecting on it. And the research says that we can break our unconscious prejudices and biases if we are trying actively to do so, if we become aware of them, if we're concerned about that. You know, the studies show that if you're really concerned and you want to overcome it, you can, if you don't just sort of push it off or dismiss it, there is a really good chance human beings working hard to overcome it can. But we do have to work hard to overcome it. That's the point. So that is what, partially what that, you know, the kind of responsive education, cultural responsive education is about. So general rules for constant, you know, this kind of education for adults, when we're training with adults, and again, this is all developmentally, you know, developmental model sensitive, you're not going to go at it the same way with, say, kindergarten or a first grader as you would a room full of adults. But when we're dealing with a room full of adults, which is one of the domains in which we work, you know, we talk to staff first, we talk to community first, that kind of thing. There is a difference between, say, safety and comfort. Everybody is, has a right to safety. Everyone should feel safe. You should feel safe from physical harm. You should feel safe from emotional abuse or harm or insults. None of that has any place in any kind of responsive education or CRE training. But comfort, comfort is different than safety. Comfort is not assured. It's not even desirable in a lot of cases. In order for us to be able to grow, we have to be able to question our, our thoughts about it, you know, question our mental models, question the schemas, question the impressions we have, and really look deeply at whether they are, you know, reflective of the reality or not. And so discomfort occurs when beliefs and perceptions are challenged, when there's cognitive dissonance. But that's an important part of the process is that, you know, we won't always be comfortable. Sometimes there'll be some uncomfortable conversations and we have to be professional as, you know, professionals and be, be ready to, to have those uncomfortable conversations. Other things about CRE when it's done effectively is that people have to practice self-soothing. You know, that it's hard sometimes not to feel attacked or to feel victimized and that the idea is that the participants have to make sure that they don't make the conversation about themselves. You know, for instance, they don't distract the group by, you know, having people have to turn and soothe them because they are having trouble with the concept, that people need to be able to self-soothe, you know, that, that they, they don't necessarily draw all the attention to themselves in the room during one of these trainings because if they do, they take the time and the focus off of the training at hand. So part of CRE is getting people to understand that even if you don't, you know, if you're feeling irked by this, let the process play out, talk respectfully to each other, you know, that kind of thing. But don't, you know, the idea is to try to avoid making oneself the center of attention, drawing energy and drawing time away from the activity at hand. And sometimes the time is limited. If you have a two-hour workshop and, you know, some, some, there's a lot of time spent trying to soothe everybody, then you don't really get that, that workshop done. And so it's, you know, it's designed to be a safe environment, but not one that takes the attention off of getting the, the work at hand done. And finally, when there are members of a minority group in the population, it's important not to have those individuals relive trauma just for the benefit of the group. So for instance, you know, sometimes there's this inclination to say, okay, well, you know, you're the black guy in the room, what do you think about this? You know, it is, sometimes that's just not fair and somebody, you know, you have to be careful not to ask people to relive trauma in their own lives for the benefit of educating the group. The, the structure should be set up that there are conversations and cases that are presented without asking people to necessarily have to share their own traumas. Because sometimes that really hurts and it can create a situation where you're unfairly relying on certain marginalized or, or other members of the, of the group to sort of educate the group. Instead, that can happen through a, a, a more safe process sometimes. And that has to be paid attention to when working with adults and working with other populations and of course with kids as well. So, you know, the idea behind CRE is to go from, say, the traditional idea of tolerance to more of an idea of solidarity. So when you think about it, when we've seen these kind of ideas about tolerance, you know, what does tolerance really mean? You know, and, and if I were, you know, doing this in a longer kind of interaction or lesson with people, I would ask them to define tolerance. You know, what do you think tolerance is? And typically that conversation would come out as, you know, tolerance is sort of like, and I, I absolutely love my mother-in-law, so I'm not saying anything, but people tolerate their fa, you know, certain members of their family, right? I, I love her, but, but I'm saying like, people will say, you know, I tolerate this person, you know. Tolerate, if you were to say, hey, mom, you know, I tolerate you. You know, if you say, hey, mom, I love you, that means something different than, hey, mom, I tolerate you. Tolerate somebody means sort of like, you know, you're not going to oppose them, you know, there's no real value there, but you, you know, you identify this person as other than yourself and the focus of it is me. I tolerate you. Moving to another level, it's respect and, and kind of affirmation. It's more of moving to the next level of appreciation. You need more information to be able to appreciate. To tolerate, that's the minimum you can get out of a human being without, you know, things getting, you know, not, you know, not kind. But respect and affirmation is the next level up from that. You know, you know about the culture. There's a respect for the culture. It stops short of advocacy. You may not go out and advocate for the same things that that culture represents, but that you have an appreciation for it. You're, you're aware of the holiday. You know when it happens, you know? You have a sense of the history of the group. You know, you know about that history and you respect it and you have an understanding, a broader understanding and respect for the, the, the person in front of you. And then the highest level is a solidarity. Not only do you have a respect for the person in front of you and a knowledge of that individual, but you are willing to advocate them as, advocate for them as if it were for yourself. That's sort of the highest level where, you know, this may not be your lived experience, but that you feel such a sense of connectedness to the other individual that you have solidarity with them. You're willing to take on, you know, the advocacy of their cause because you feel that it is humanly right and you were, you relate to that. And that's where you get to the level and the center of focus of us. We are working on behalf of each other and we have a great understanding and respect of each other, but beyond that, I'm willing to fight for you, you're willing to fight for me, and we need, and we want to take care of each other actively. So when you're looking at something like CRE, you're looking at trying to reach the level where there's not just a tolerance of one another, there's not just a respect and knowledge of each other, but that you really are working hard and fighting for each other, that you have each other's backs, so to speak, that you care about the other person's needs as much as you care about your own. And that is the highest level of a responsive education. So, you know, the idea is, you know, what do we tolerate? Moving from tolerance to respect and understanding, you know, moving to a point where people, you know, are caring about each other's interests as much as they care about their own. So there's a short video here by the NEA that, this is the National Education Association. It is the, one of the largest, you know, teachers unions and groups. I can play that video, which is basically about Marley Diaz. It's a quick ad from, you know, the DEA that they put out there, or I can just keep moving through it. You know, Madam Chair, do you want me to kind of play that video? It's about two minutes, or I can just keep moving through?
Sorry, I was muted. If you want to play it, that's fine, as long as you have the capabilities and your computer won't shut off. Click it.
All right, let's, uh, let us hope that, that this goes off the way that I'm hoping. So I'm going to change the screen sharing and I will play this quick video and it should have sound too. So it's from the National Education Association and it talks about, you know, the institutional struggles of school systems. And it uses Marley Diaz, who is a, a young student who advocated for more material that reflected, you know, reflected, reflected a true and broader sense of, of the community. So here's a quick video that, that is sometimes used when, you know, as a, as a conversation starter.
Hi, I'm Marley Diaz. I'm 11 years old. A lot of grownups think that opportunities exist for all kids and all we need to do is apply ourselves. But I know that's just not true. It shouldn't matter if you live in the city or suburbs, on a farm or a reservation, or what your zip code may be, but it does. There's still rules to keep our schools separate and unequal. We spend a lot of time talking about whether what someone says or does is racist, but that's not enough. You not liking me for the color of my skin is not the only thing that can affect my chances for success. I'm talking about the built-in barriers that keep me and other kids from reaching our full potential. It's all around us. We might not recognize it, even when it's right under our noses. Like remember that time I had to start a campaign just to get books in my library about kids who look like me? Do you care enough to look closer, to talk to each other, to your students, to your communities? We've got to change the dialogue because when we do, you'll be amazed by all we can accomplish.
So that is, that is a conversation starter. We might use that as part of something, you know, when we're beginning. And so let me just make sure I get that. And so let me just make sure I get back this other piece here. One second. Right there. All right, so we should be looking.
Good grammar and spelling are important, but if you want...
Okay, all right. That's the problem with YouTube is you never know what you're going to get next. So I'm just trying to knock that out. Okay, so, so basically, you know, that would be a conversation starter, for instance, in one of the, you know, the meetings that we might have. And so we would begin, you know, view that, start talking, as well as a series of other videos that we've used and different resources. So again, culturally responsive ed, to do the why, to do the what. It's recognizing bias in ourselves. It's how we can try to stop a perpetuation of disadvantage in certain, you know, marginalized populations and groups and be very focused on making sure things are fair and equitable. And it's recognizing in ourselves, you know, how we approach individuals and people and trying to be actively always working against the biases that we might naturally bring to a situation when we don't necessarily have a lot of experience with other people that are of that background. So it's a constant, as I said, ongoing effort. So now, just to segue into the CRE kind of activities that we've been working on in TALON, they have to do with basically a couple of categories that I put in here. Staff presentations and trainings, presentations for other organizations in the state that I've done and that we've had other staff engage in, culture and climate subcommittee work, surveys, data review and planning, curriculum, embedded literature, partnerships and cooperative activities. These are all ways that we're actively working to continue to evolve, you know, how we understand and what we do so that we're moving, again, from that tolerance kind of state of being to a deep understanding and to a better, you know, better, a better way of approaching problems that reflects a solidarity, an active feeling of wanting to really understand and help other people the way that we want to be or help ourselves. So I'll go over, you know, briefly, the efforts, starting in that, you know, kind of year of 1617, although there were efforts prior to that. This is just, you know, it's a quick overview. There were a series of sessions and trainings that were done in the district. You know, academic behavior, social emotional development, normalizing difference, asset to try, these are all presentations designed to help familiarize people with all of the things that I talked about before in brief. And to move us to a point of looking at how we did things and looking at how we can evolve them to be more inclusive, to be more restorative, and to be mindful of difference. So on top of that, we also did faculty presentations. So these are overall district ones given to everyone. And then we did individual faculty presentations, brought in various groups to do that. In this case, Dr. Gerald Hairston through CREG. Also, he was part of a number of different organizations at the time as well. And he did presentations for the staff that also helped bring us to a better understanding on things like academic identity, meaning how one sees themselves and their own prospects for success has a lot to do with their cultural background and the kind of interactions they have with other people and so on. So that in short is just a general description, but these programs were extensive and, you know, were provided through all the buildings. In addition to that, we went through a process with the Capital Region Education Council and the Open Choice Program to really look at all of our operations in the schools, go through our buildings, look at how welcoming our buildings were, do a review of special education, do a review of practices. They visited our Board of Education meetings. This was all done in that general span of time as we started our relationship with the Open Choice Program. And, you know, it provided a lot of insights. I think the principals found it really helpful, as did a lot of other staff, in reflecting on things that we would not have otherwise thought about. It added a number of different perspectives that, you know, had we not kind of, you know, had that exposure to people that are not typically attending TALON public schools, we would not have been able to have the insights that came out of that process. So it was part of the CRE efforts, part of the CRE process and, you know, it was really like a kind of audit for the school system in our buildings. 1617, we continued that relationship with additional trainings. You see those dates here, December 9th, the 20th, February 28th. And there were a number of open meetings and public workshops. They also re-engaged the BOE at that time. There were book clubs and family outreach activities. And, you know, we engaged in those, our administrators engaged in that. We went through and, you know, read literature, discussed it, and did these common kind of activities and plannings and trainings. And we developed an open choice five-year projection that we used to talk a lot more about in the past, but we're right along the lines of what we had been talking about during that time. CRE implementation, once again, you know, the idea being that we really wanted to be a safe environment too, that there is no need for a child or group to experience trauma in an effort to help others learn. So, you know, with that in mind, we really were careful as we walked into the next steps and we started to talk more and more about this in student populations, that we were not creating any traumatic experiences. And I don't think, you know, anybody can do anything 100% perfectly, but I think that, you know, having that in mind did help us as we approached, you know, different activities to make sure that, you know, we weren't, if you were the one child in the class that was of a certain background, that you were not, you know, constantly accessed as the representative for your entire, you know, race or group. So we were trying, you know, very careful to try to do that in a way that did not, you know, create trauma or discomfort. And again, nothing is 100% perfect, but, you know, we were advised and worked very hard towards that end. So in 17 and 18, you know, we continued to do additional work within the schools and develop practices. The CRE committees and culture, you know, culture and climate committees started to develop in-school programs and presentations. And, you know, to this day, Birch Grove has had many of them. You know, each of these individual committees and individual buildings provided even more trainings and activities. So what you see here is only a fraction of what ended up happening at the school level with the local CC, the culture and climate committees, for instance, and so on. You know, in addition to that, you know, as we entered the period, say, of Birch Grove construction, you know, that did throw a little bit of a wrench into efforts, but they still continue and that team is working really hard. You know, COVID obviously threw a wrench in our operation, but, you know, to the extent that, you know, we've never let go of this, you know, there are things that get in the way, but that we constantly work to continue to provide both presentations on the district level and the committees working locally are providing, you know, programs at the local level, meaning, when I say local, I mean at school level as well. And more, you know, as we moved into 18, 19, and 20, we had many, many more programs and expanded our efforts. So, you know, as I kind of give you some examples here, you know, we had a True Colors program come in and, you know, did a number of faculty presentations. We did a special administrator workgroups and presentations and the Board of Education was involved also, as you may recall, some of you, in that True Colors program. So it's yet another example, and additional community workshops on it as well. In addition to that, from 2018 to 2020, 2021, many workshops were established for both community and for faculty and staff. UConn Panel Discussion of Systemic Racism in Education, Resilience Program, and these dates are in here too, Talking About Gender: The Voices From Our Schools, which some of you are very familiar with, from June. Upcoming ones are Let's Talk About Race in Schooling, which will happen in December. And there's a special workshop that will happen on Understanding Black Lives Matter, which is, you know, which I think, you know, out there, people really don't have a good understanding of that. And so we'll be bringing in people to present on that that can give a very, you know, deep understanding of it. And also, we're working on establishing relationships and partnerships. Currently, we work with a graduate group, student, you know, students who have graduated and moved on, and at this point, most of them actually have graduated from college as well. So they're full-fledged adults and they are, they are working in a group with me and others to look at, evaluate their own lived experiences in the TALON public schools, express those, give us insights about what their educational experience was like. Many of them did graduate years ago, say in 2016, 2015, 2014, but, you know, they've been, they've been able to provide really good perspectives upon which we can constantly evolve our programs and our restorative practices. The Youth and Justice Department grant, we received, you know, we applied and got a $100,000 grant that we've been applying to this work. There's a Skills for Adolescence class. And most recently, we're working on a Common Ground program for the high school where literally it is the common ground, where we bring people together to, you know, to work on eliminating bias and to work on coming together as people to go from that tolerance to solidarity, to advocacy, to fighting for each other. And most recently, I'm working on a relationship with the CREG Teacher and Residency Program to try to increase the, you know, diversity of our staff as well as the student body, you know, and get, you know, get groups working together. So, you know, this is an example off to the right, that graphic on your screen of one of the programs and UConn, you know, those were the individuals, Joseph Cooper, Mark Ohan, Shyla, and I think it's Numeli. These are individuals that were professors at UConn who helped come and do the program with and for us. So we do pull in, you know, a series of different representations and from different organizations to help with the process overall. And as part of it, I also have presented at CREG workshops, you know, with the work that we have done in the district. They've asked us to come and present at certain, you know, workshops and things like that to talk about the schools. And so, you know, this was one of the ones that was offered by CREG, that was moderated by Dr. Hairston and I participated in. So it's both about working in the schools and also, you know, expanding out into programs like CREG, one of the most, the largest regional, you know, education centers. There's a bunch of them in Connecticut. CREG is one of the biggest, you know, and working in cooperation with that organization to, you know, both participate in workshops and also have them come in and deliver them with and for us. So I wanted to give you some basic results. This is kind of overload, I know that, so I'm not, you know, I'm not asking you to sort of just absorb the whole thing. But essentially, the red and the blue are the strongly agree and the agree. So you can see that the response to most of these items from the student population, from the first sections of the resurrected Skills for Adolescence course, the red and the blue was the affirmative, the agree or strongly agrees. So you can see that the red and blue is the majority of the students with the, you know, the green and the purple as the strongly disagrees. But most of these questions, you know, what I learned in the class helped me understand how my brain works and can influence decision-making, or how emotional intelligence can be important, or how a person's implicit biases can distort how they view other people, or, you know, help me understand how implicit biases can, some of them are repeated, but, you know, understand racism and understand bullying and how to avoid bullying. You know, some of the, you know, taking good and bad risks. Again, the red and the blue is the affirmative, agree or strongly agree that it helped them. And so, you know, these are all different data points. And, you know, the results that we got for both talking about implicit biases and talking about bullying and talking about risky behaviors and even this one about, I will be less likely to vape or use drugs because of what I learned in this class, you know, that red and blue in that particular one in the middle column was very, very powerful, you know, that had a big impact. So the results from our first go-around of the SCA classes, I called them SCA because I was trying to be cool, but obviously made that entirely uncool in that process. But the point is that, you know, it was resurrecting that Skills for Adolescence course that made such a big difference in the past, but we had lost because of budget. So that funding that I talked about, that $100,000 helped us resurrect this and get this back going again, and it lives today. And additional counseling resources existed because of it as well. So that's, you know, this is additional work that we've been doing and most recently, as we are in the 2020-2021 zone. And it has to do with, you know, resurrecting those classes that can make a difference in how kids see the world and how they experience their own education and helping each other, going from that tolerance to that advocacy solidarity. And, you know, the Common Ground stuff, the relationships with Open Choice, the relationships with the Teacher and Residency Program, those are all the most recent current initiatives that are part of our process today. So, you know, certain books that have been published on this, they're being used now in school systems. I threw an example of that here. And also, social emotional learning, the district is engaged in a process of three years to expand our efforts in social emotional learning. So I threw that in here as well because it does dovetail with CRE. And you can see the results of this kid's survey. They did talk about how, you know, getting exposed and understanding social emotional learning, emotional regulation, things like that, were important in learning how to best deal with each other when they don't agree or when there's things that are upsetting. You know, understanding social emotional learning, emotional regulation, how to assess their own emotions helps them deal with other people better. So this is part of a three-year program where we're implementing social emotional learning and the ruler training and things like that into our own operations. You know, like I said, this particular piece, COVID put a little bit of a dampener on what we were able to do last summer, last spring into the year, but we're still on that horse and we're still working hard to try to get where we need to go with it. So that wraps up the presentation for this evening. I think I hit that in about 20, maybe a little more. But that should give you a good overview of, you know, the what, the why, and essentially what we've been doing most recently.
Well, thank you very much for this. I think it's important for us to have an understanding of what is happening in the schools. And I know that 2016, 2015 was when you took over as superintendent, so I know you've put a lot of effort into this. So I really thank you for that. One of the first questions I have are, you know, like what kind of the programs are available for like the Board of Ed to have for cultural awareness and have those discussions? Like is there, what's available, what's out there, what's...
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a great idea, Ms. Lundgren, that we would do, you know, do these kinds of things and work with the board, and that's great to mention it. So yeah, there are many programs that are offered by the Capital Region Education Council and other groups, and they would be, they would be more than happy and willing and do regularly work with Boards of Education to do this kind of work, awareness work, responsive education work, because it's really, you know, it's an all-hands-in kind of thing. So I think that's a great idea of having this kind of, these kinds of presentations being brought to the board and have the board participate in these activities as well. And I can set that up, you know, every third meeting or fourth meeting or on certain intervals. I think that would be, that would be great.
You know, I think of having a range of different topics to kind of hit and go through because obviously our purview is our school systems and our children. So, you know, it's good to have a better understanding of, you know, what is actually being said. You know, I had a kid with the skills of adolescence. He did not have you as a teacher. He got in right after. So I don't know about your SCA teaching, but you know...
He's probably lucky. Lucky he's gotten his, you know, San Jo, she's good.
Perfect. Let me open it up to the board members. Kate?
Just first of all, thank you for all of your efforts in culturally responsive education. When I say that it's life-saving, I'm not engaging in hyperbole. I just had a quick question. I was just curious about, there was that, well, I mean, you had to go and get the grant to pay for it because we didn't put it into the budget for various and sundry reasons. But in that little gap time when we didn't have this class and didn't have the focus on culturally responsive education, like as a class, what, did you see any, do we have any evidence or did you know of any issues that kind of bubbled out? You know, like what did the kids lose out on?
Yeah, you know, and there was a span of time where there were some tough budget years, and I'm recalling them as something like 2008, '09, '10, there was sort of, I think that was the time, there were a couple of really tough ones. And in that time, we lost teen leadership, we lost Skills for Adolescence, we lost some of these programs that really helped, you know, at a very crucial developmental time, address some of the needs of the kids in terms of their, you know, their growth in that area. And so we did notice a difference, you know, coming out 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. One of the things that became pretty, you know, pretty obvious to me, working with the admin and as a principal and then into a superintendent, is that, you know, the loss of those programs really did impact us. They went along the same, also, the state dropped the DARE program. That was no longer supported in the same way. So it was almost like during the state, you know, certain, you know, series of years, in one fell swoop, we lost a lot of programs that helped students, you know, in, you know, life-saving and even, you know, life-management ways. And so we saw an uptick in all kinds of behaviors that are, you know, unproductive, not helpful towards each other. And, and so, you know, it was obvious when I came in, I felt a strong need to bring, you know, things that would help address what we had lost and what I was seeing and others were seeing as sort of... as a sort of trend in undesirable behavior, not only just individually for kids, but towards each other. So I think we're headed in the right direction here. Obviously, I don't claim to have, this process has not solved all issues, but I think we're in a much better trajectory than where we were directly after the impact of losing all of those programs at once or in this small span of time. So we're heading in the right direction. And again, there's no end. It's always a constant review and trying to make sure those resources are there. So I feel that we are heading in the right place.
Just a quick follow-up and then I will stop talking. But question about the graduates, graduates that you're working with. What kind of perspectives have they told you about with regard to when they leave Talend and the bubble that is Talend?
Well, you know, it's interesting you should use the word bubble. There were, we did do an activity with the Board of Ed at one point. I forget, it was a year, two years ago or something. And the students did, they just, out of their own volition, they used that exact term. They identified that, they felt like when they were here, they were in a sort of bubble. And that they really, when they went out into the world, things were quite different and that they really weren't feeling prepared. And I've seen that, not saying academically per se, but really more like when they're working with diverse groups of people that are different themselves, people that they haven't had that much exposure to, that they found some of that more difficult and that they felt like they were living in a quote-unquote "bubble." And so that has been a theme. I have seen that with the graduated individuals that I talked to as a group. There are actually a subset of that group that don't feel like they, they just don't feel yet like they can have more public conversations about it because they felt so marginalized that they just, they're difficult, they just understandably don't want to really interact on the topic anymore. And so that group I feel sad about because they felt so marginalized that they have no desire to have any connection with it anymore at all. And I'm hoping that someday I can draw them back in and we can benefit from their experience, their lived experience, and we can continue to improve. But the other larger group right now of the graduates are really helping inform some of the things through their lived experiences. We are able to make some significant adjustments. And we're still in the process of doing that. But it's been immensely helpful to have had the access and to have had these conversations. So I thank them profusely. And we've been working with that. And the Common Ground Organization is something that is coming to fruition because of those conversations, as an example. Also, we're evaluating things like our PEP rallies. Our PEP rallies have had some reason to be thoughtful about them and to reflect on them. And that's another example of when we hear from people that have graduated, they point to certain things and say, you really might want to think about this and how this was executed and how this felt. And it helps. So again, it's a crucial group to be talking to.
Thank you. Just another quick comment, not really looking for input, just a statement really. I do believe that this work is so important to keep doing. And I want to commend you for figuring out how to keep doing it, even in these last couple of years. I think that it's so crucial to the mental health of our students that they can feel efficacious not only in their own bubble, as we said, but also in the greater world. So just thank you on that. That's it.
Sure. And to be clear, I want to, you know, I really appreciate the hard work that has been done by our staff on this and by our administrators, by our teachers, by our faculty, by our paras and all. They've played a very active process in it. The main thing that I have done is listened. I've done my very best to listen and do less talking, more listening with the populations that have had that lived experience. So they all deserve the credit. And I am just basically listening and trying to adapt to what they're saying. It's their lived experiences and the students, faculty, and those that are really making the day-to-day difference. So they deserve all of the credit.
Thank you. Let's go to Karen.
Dr. Willett, really quick. The Ruler Training, is that, that's through Mark Brackett, right? In the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence? I'm not sure if I got that right.
No, you're right. It is exactly that work. He does work in industry for Emotional Intelligence. A book out there called Emotional Intelligence 2.0. But developed a program specifically for schools called Ruler. And that's a program we're looking to, I explored it when I was a principal with staff that I sent. But we are also exploring it as a district, as you saw at the end of that slide.
Yes, I did hear him speak at the CAVE Conference in the past. And he did some workshops while he was there as well. And he talked about that, so I do recall from that. So those conferences are helpful. And CAVE does bring some great speakers like Mark to the table. I was just going to ask, how can the board continue to support you and our admins and staff and continue to set them up for success? Because I think administrators especially need to know that their school board has their backs. And it's important to understand that this is continuous work, obviously, from your presentation, and there's been a lot going on over the years. So continuing to do the work, and it's not just one single moment. It is a process and it's continuous. So how can we, as a board, I guess, help in supporting that?
Yeah. I'll answer that. Let me do a quick thing. Dana, I noticed that Ms. Philbin joined. I think that our Lisa wants to know the time so that she can kind of include that. Do you know, can you just give me an idea of what time you just jumped in?
Hi. Sorry, I've probably been in for about five minutes. So I'd say 9:25 PM, Lisa.
Perfect. Thank you. Lisa, there you go. All right, thank you very much. So obvious, we work as a team. We learn. We learn together. I think one of the ways that the board can support the efforts that the admin are making is to do what Lundgren said there. If the board participating in these activities really will help evolve the entire district. It helps us move forward together. Because if we don't have common understandings of the issues that we face and the work that we're doing, then it can cause division and it can cause sort of, you know, sort of an unraveling of the solidarity, moving from that tolerance to solidarity and fighting for each other. So I think one of the most important things is for the board to engage in activities that make them more and more aware of what a culturally responsive ed and responsive education is. And I think that that will help largely in the process, setting things up like that, getting, evolving understandings as a group. And being a part of that constant evolution really does help us stay together and make that big difference.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Plor.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Willett, for the presentation. I did see it a couple of years ago, but I feel like I had a much greater appreciation for it this time around after reading some of the books you told me to read. One thing I wanted to say, you had told me to read the book Rain of Error when I first was on the board in 2017. And I think something I took away from that book might help some people in the public or maybe even some members in the board understand where I'm coming from when I look at the budget and I try to find deficiencies. And really, what it comes down to is, when I look at the system, a system tied to property taxes, an educational system tied to property taxes, will always divide rich from poor. And unfortunately, in Connecticut, that means black from white. And that was all part of my letter to the governor that I got a lot of pushback on. So if that, and I could talk for hours about this, so maybe a workshop would be a great opportunity for the board to have a conversation or even in some of our committee's curriculum understanding, like the curriculum from Skills for Adolescence or whatever. We can talk about and have more time there. But just wanted to give that perspective, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I don't want to push people out and I don't want to keep people out, if I wanted to simplify that. And that's kind of what I feel in my heart is the best way to stop systemic racism.
Yeah. And Diane Ravitch has a lot of work, helicopter view a lot of times of schools in general. So Rain of Error is a good book to understand, say, even the magnet charter movement. And then we can drill down if the Board of Ed wants to do some book groups. I think that would be really awesome. There are a number of different books we could read together and then talk about them, which I think would help, again, kind of move that conversation along.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Griffin.
Thank you, Dr. Willett, for putting together this presentation. It was really just a great way to start the conversation, so I really appreciate that. I was curious if the graduate group that you've been working with, I know you said that most of them graduated, I think it was '14, '15, and '16. And you started all your efforts, if you will, on all this in '16. So just, I was curious, did they have any feedback for you on whether they felt that everything you've done since 2016 was really a step in the right direction? And did they kind of give you any feedback as to things that they would like to see put into the schools specifically? I was just wondering kind of what their thoughts were on it.
I think there have been some individuals involved, although I have not been able to get as much access to them because a lot of the young adults or adults that are in college, they're not as accessible sometimes. But I've received feedback, both positive and constructive, about where we are now and what to continue to consider and think about. And I intend to continue to incorporate that in a variety of ways. The Voices is one, Voices programs are what I'm looking at for future. The nuance there is, again, not to traumatize any kids who've had experiences. I have to be very careful about that. So I want to be able to talk about the truth of their lived experience without necessarily asking them to relive very painful moments or things that have happened. So there have been still young adults that have graduated that aren't as far out as, say, that 2014, '15, '16, that have expressed some continued thoughts about our curriculum, the kinds of things that they experienced throughout that span of time. And they're informative and helpful. Again, I think it's important for me, obviously, to take deep breaths and listen very carefully because obviously, there's a lot of work here invested. But at the same time, I can still acknowledge that that lived experience still was not what I hoped it could be. So there's always opportunities. And so I think that while there have been people that have expressed that they've noticed some things have changed, there are others who continue to express concern and so, and constructive feedback. So I try to listen very carefully to that and put aside whatever personal, what might rise up as a defense or defensiveness. Once again, using that CRE practice, not make the conversation about myself or my own personal feelings, but to listen very carefully to what they're saying and really try to find in it what I can do to take that and make a difference with it. So I have heard from people more recently than that too. And like I said, some were feeling like there was a difference. And some were saying that they offered some feedback about how some things persist and how we can continue to evolve. So I think those Voices programs will be helpful because we can continue to hear those voices, to center the voices of the students and their lived experiences, and then be able to talk about them. Not get defensive about them per se, but hear them and then look at where we can make that difference, that type of thing.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Jacob.
Okay, so a few things. First, I agree a lot with what Christina said. I think that's an important way to look at these issues and something that I definitely take up into consideration when we talk about the budget as well. Another thing that just kind of parallels this conversation that I did want to bring up from my personal educational experience in Talend schools is just kind of the influence of some of the literature we read up in English class. I remember having very long conversations and long units about books like The Watsons Go to Birmingham or To Kill a Mockingbird, which covered events during the Civil Rights Movement. And I like to see that those programs are continued. I think those are very helpful, very impactful up in my life in understanding those sorts of issues. Also, I was just wondering, is this PowerPoint and some of the other materials that might be included up in some of those workshops available for viewing up on the dashboard? So we could review them further, Dr. Willett?
Sure. Yeah, this one I just finished tonight. A few minutes before the meeting, I was putting the final touches on it. So I'll post this as soon as we're done tonight, both to the dashboard and to the website. If not tonight, we go too late tonight, tomorrow maybe, but yes.
All right. Okay, thank you.
This was great. I think it was a great initial conversation. Like you said, it's always evolving and there's just a lot to it. I do think that if you can get that out on the dashboard, that would be great. But I'm not sure maybe if the public might want to have access to because you did have a lot of information. So I think that would be helpful, just in case. I know you have 101 different websites and everything else going. But if you could post that, that would be great as well. Okay, so at this time, let's move to the H4. No, H3, the Birch Grove for the code violation for unsuitable soils.
Right. So I apologize that things are fast and furious with the Birch Grove Project. We did get the opportunity to have the unsuitable soils covered. But in order to have them covered, which looks like they would be almost 100% covered by the state, the cost of them would be extensive. And so having that resolved is extremely beneficial for the students and the community. But in order to do that, the process requires that we have another committee. And it's not a big one, it's a small one. Peter Staub is on there, Mike Rosen's on there. It's like a sub-subcommittee of that process. But the purpose of it is to go through and just go, basically evaluate and do the head specs and the unsuitable soils for the code violation that it's being considered to be. So in order for that to move forward, we had to do what's called an SGC 1030 Head Specs Forum for the project, which is resolving the unsuitable soils project. And the Board of Ed needs to move that forward for us to be able to move it forward and to get that reimbursement for the town of Talend or to get it actually paid for, I'm sorry, for the town of Talend. So this introduces the basic structure that we need to move that forward. And the motion here would be to approve the Educational Specifications Document for the Birch Grove Primary School Foundation Project under the Renovators New Status and to accept and authorize the project to be executed. This would be to authorize the project for unsuitable soils and to execute that project. So what I want to kind of segue to here is the head specifications. The Birch Grove Primary School violation of the unsuitable soils is kind of articulated in project form in this document that we created. Obviously, Peter Staub is on the committee here that will be reviewing this. It's a short-term committee. It's a short-term committee. Um, it talks about the project itself, the project rationale, why we're going to be replacing the soils and it, it does cover a lot of the things that we've already seen with respect to background, what the long-range plans are. Um, this section here is specifically about the code violation. So it describes what happens. It describes why it's a, you know, why and what we're doing to remediate that. And it's expected, the most important piece here for us is, you know, it's expected that the state of Connecticut will be reimbursing the cost at a hundred percent. So in order to move that forward, um, we have to have the Board of Ed move forward on, um, you know, on this. So, um, this just will continue, you know, through, if you, I'll post it. And I apologize, uh, that everything I said, like I said, is, is fast and furious here. But we do need, um, you know, we do need to, to move forward with it tonight in order to, uh, to get the process, you know, all the way to completion and to get that reimbursement of $1.9 million. So, um, so we would want to move H3 to action. And we would want to approve the educational specifications for the Birch Grove Primary School Foundation Project under the renovated new status and authorize this project to be executed. We'd probably also want to add, um, you know, add the unsuitable soils piece to this. I think this motion would work, but I think we would also want to say, motion to approve the educational specifications document for, uh, the Birch Grove Primary School Foundation Project under the renovated new status, as well as the unsuitable soils, um, project and authorize this project to be executed. But you'd need to move it to action, obviously, to do that.
This is Kate Howard Bender. I moved to approve the educational specifications document for the Birch Grove Primary School Foundation Project under renovate as new status in addition to the unsuitable soils, something.
Yeah, well, I'll give you that.
I think we have to move it.
Yeah, move it now, move it right now.
Move it.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Christina, fourth second.
I'm trying to move it. So if anybody cares to second.
So H3 to, yeah.
Any discussion? Um, I see hands are up. Uh, Plor, do you have your hand up? And Tony?
It was just to move it to action.
Okay.
Yeah, move H3 to K4, so.
Yep, K4. Tony?
So I'm just trying to understand. It, it seems to be a trend with this project that we have. This is another thing that we have to review and approve immediately or the state withdraws its funding?
Well, I think it, again, it's in response to the emergency project of the, um, you know, the foundation, you know, being seen as a emergency status project and that, you know, them completing that project in a two-year time span provides less of an impact for the community of Talon. In this particular case, what they're trying to do is give the town of Talon, um, you know, $1.9 million to cover the cost of the code violation of the unsuitable soil. So, you know, rather than incurring that as a community, they're, they're trying to avoid us, uh, or Talon from having to incur that as a community. So it is, it is definitely a short-term thing that requires a short-term turnaround, but it's towards the effort of getting that $1.9 million covered at a hundred percent.
Got it.
Okay, Karen?
Um, just to help with Tony's question, Dr. Willett, isn't this related to that special mini-committee that they had to form because of the unsuitable soils and a lot of paperwork that had to be done because of it? And it's something that was required by the state for, to deal with the unsuitable soils?
Basically, yes. We need to do it as a different project. And so there's a small committee of three. Pete Staba, I think it is Pete Staba, Mike Rosen, and I think it might be Scott Lappin. You know, it's a small committee meant to execute this as a separate project to address the code violation.
Yes.
Okay. And with that said, um, let's go to a vote to move this to, what do we say, um, K4?
I think it was already moved.
We have to vote.
Oh, sorry. Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Plor?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Uh, Griffin?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Rini?
Hi.
All right, as well, therefore this motion will move to K4. So let's go to, um, H5, the Zoom participation discussion. We had added on.
Actually, can we not say to H4?
You have an H4.
Oh, I'm sorry. H4, 2021 Board of Education meeting dates, the first read.
Right. So if I can just kind of give a quick intro, as you recall from the last meeting, um, there was a policy, a recommended policy change to move back to, uh, or to move it to seven o'clock meetings. So, you know, in keeping with the timeline for typically talking about our budget dates, uh, this is being put forward to you as superintendent item as a first read of the dates. But your decision to, you know, to change the day, the time from 7:30 to seven, should you decide to do that in action tonight, would then affect this document. So you could either stick this document after that for action or you can change the time back to seven o'clock and wait two weeks to approve the actual dates, knowing that the time has been changed. Um, so this is just to get the dates in front of you, which is typically the time of year that we would do that. Um, and we would adjust the, uh, any documentation with respect to these dates by, um, by putting the new time in if you decide to change the time tonight. So this is the first read of the actual dates for you.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Hopefully.
Because these are all like essentially the, um, the second and the fourth Wednesdays. And this is just the normal protocol of having the dates in here. And, and, um, the discussion of the time is still, uh, later and.
Right. Mostly, that is what, uh, that is mostly what those are. There may be a one or two that may be off that because of some conflict, but this is generally the, the second and fourth.
So are we putting this motion in if we, uh, move this to tag along with the K1? Is this what you're saying?
I'm saying, yeah, at your discretion, you could, you could move this to action alongside or right after you change the time, if you do that. Or you can make the second read on the dates next meeting and change the time or don't change the time tonight in action. But right now in action, the second read of that policy is whether you're changing the time from 7:30 to seven.
Because we just have the dates by the first meeting in November, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we can wait on that then. We can just have the dates on here and then we can have that discussion later and then do everything together. Okay. So everyone has the dates now. Okay. Is there any discussion on the dates? Don't let your computer die. Okay.
Nervous.
Let's go to the, um, H5 now with the Zoom discussion participation. So Kate, if you would like to.
Yeah, it's, I'd just like to, to discuss the possibility, is it possible for us to continue to offer Zoom as a way for our residents, not as a replacement, but as a way, as an additional way for residents to stay involved in our meetings? I think that we've seen an, uh, marked increase in engagement and I think that that is a good thing for our kids and good for our board, um, to have more folks' voices at the table. So that's really just what this is all about, just getting this idea on the table since.
Um, let's go to board members. Tony?
Uh, I just, you know, I want to point out, I, I, I agree with what Kate's saying. You know, obviously these past couple of months, rather selfishly, Zoom has allowed me to participate in meetings I, I normally couldn't have. Uh, but I wanted to add to that, you know, we've got policy 9160, which talks about, uh, eating conduct and it's got a section in there for telephonic participation, uh, which obviously needs to be updated, but could be brought to the modern age. And instead of saying telephonic, say remote and allow for that possibility of Zoom meetings, but we could fit it in there.
So then it's a, could be a policy conversation for the subcommittee, but let's, since we have it on the floor, let's get some board members', um, discussion. And then, you know, I believe that that would end up going back to your committee, Tony. Karen?
Yes, just a case in point, tonight we've had between 30 and 35, um, participants even just on tonight's meeting. And if we were in council chambers, that would not be happening. Um, over the years, it's always been an issue, to engage parents in their Board of Education, um, their children's education and what's going on at this level, because of childcare or, you know, both parents need to be home or one is working or things like that. And in the past, we've tried to offer childcare and things like that, which is also kind of a struggle to organize. But, you know, I think out of this pandemic, if we look at it as, you know, a positive thing that people have been able to engage in these meetings, then that's, you know, a good thing. It's a positive thing. And, um, sometimes technology can help us, so we should be embracing it. 21st century skills for us and adults. So I'm all for it if we can make it happen.
Okay. Any other board members at this time? Because at this point, I am going to just ask Tony to take that upon himself in the policy to rewrite. And he loves policies and I'm not sure if he's on right now, but I'm sure he'll be excited about that.
So I'm guessing that you're saying, asking him to put it on his policy tracker? Is that what you're?
Yes, definitely.
Okay.
You know, I think that would be helpful. Okay.
Did we move to extend our meeting past 10 o'clock?
Uh, yes, I will entertain a motion to extend our meeting past 10 o'clock.
Kate Howard Bender, so moved.
All right, second.
Okay, let's, uh, vote. Karen?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Plor?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
And Rini?
Hi.
I as well, therefore, um, meeting will go past 10. Okay, so let's move to, and Tony, um, did you get the memo that we're going to move that participation that, uh, 9160, that you can review it in your Policies Committee?
Correct.
Perfect. Committee liaison report, um, let's see, do we have FFC?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we went through the, um, September numbers, budget to actual with greater detail. Thank you, Dr. Willett, for providing Appendix F-1, as it is now being called. That was perfect, exactly what we were looking for. Um, we talked about the COVID-related grants and we're still waiting hopefully for the COVID relief fund grant and the CARES Act grant. Um, and we've had about $150,000 to date expense for COVID-related items. We talked about the capital budget request and we talked about having, um, FFC do facilities tours. Uh, that was, um, Ms. Philbin's suggestion, which we all thought was really great to kind of go through our five buildings and kind of to see. So we're going to set those up in the future. And then, um, perhaps before next year's capital request, um, since it was a little bit of a time crunch this year, we're going to maybe talk to Staba and his crew a couple of times throughout the year to just to get a really good understanding of what is going to be expected, um, when that comes around again. So that was about it. Thank you very much.
I just have to say, if Dana's going on these tours, just keep in mind she has these license to use these machinery.
We already told her she's, we might need her to drive the lift thing, so.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Let's see, negotiations, I think they had something, Rini?
I, I actually had a quick question for, uh, finance and facilities.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, I'm just wondering if the whole board, you know, once COVID's over, should be doing, um, facility tours? Because in the past, um, what used to happen, um, and Dr. Willett, I think, you know, with the new board and things, um, that in the past, uh, when the new board is in place, um, there were tours that would happen through each of the schools if we could, if we were available to do it. Not everyone was always available to do it, but it was a quick tour with the principal at each school. And they just walked us around to familiarize us with their school, uh, something that happened in the past. So just a suggestion.
And I think that's a good suggestion. I know it's hard to get into places with COVID, so I think that would have to be something.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about now. This is something that used to happen.
Yeah, no, but I do like the idea of having that happen if, once we can, whenever that date might become available. Okay, negotiations. Rini?
Um, you know, we're, we're working with the pariunion and, um, you know, having discussions and we've got some dates set up, so we're, we're working through that. And other than that, there's not really a lot that can be reported.
Perfect. Um, Birch Grove, obviously the unsuitable soil kind of was the big thing.
Um, yes, um, we met and we talked about the unsuitable soils, which obviously Dr. Willett brought, um, to the table today. And Ms. Bellity explained why the town needs to set up a special building committee. So this is something, um, and it's separate from the committee that the actual Birch Grove committee, what, what Dr. Willett has said. And this is just, um, more profiling the proper procedure and ensuring. And that's why Pete, Mr. Staba is on it, um, as a building committee member. Uh, he can speak intelligently at what's going on and, um, and what have you. But as, as Dr. Willett said, there are three members on that to ensure, um, that that leg, that legislation works and it actually gets approved for that hundred percent, um, funding. But with that, it kind of turns over to the effect of some, some things we kind of put to the wayside when it comes to some fine touches and different, um, aesthetics in the building. There were some things that the committee had to put to the side to vote on to add to the project or to take off. But because of, on the unknown of the unsuitable soils, we had to kind of put them to the side. So we're bringing those back to the table to see what we can't put into the, the building itself. And the, uh, the building committee did have some folks were able to tour the facility, which was fantastic. Um, the Demata and the entire team on the Birch Grove, uh, uh, the construction team, sorry, did a phenomenal job. They set up two different, um, sightwalks, one at 3:30, one at 5:30 before our, um, meeting that evening. There are several folks, um, myself included, who had work restrictions, who weren't able to attend. Um, they've offered for another one, um, this Saturday. They've bent over backwards to be accommodating so that folks can actually, to see what's going on and see the progress and see how far, um, we really are moving with this building. It is enclosed and it's tight. They're moving, they're moving very quickly and efficiently and effectively. It looks phenomenal if any of you have driven by. Um, so I wanted to say thank you to the entire team working on that site, uh, who have done whatever they can to keep this project on task and to open up their doors, literally and vigorously to allow building committee members to come onto the site. And the mock room is almost done, so that will be able to be, and I don't know if Dr. Willett can say a little bit more about it in better detail, um, but pretty much it's, it's going to be a 100% finished room. So we'd have an idea of what an ideal classroom will look like in Birch Grove. And that's kind of where we are with the building committee right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Um, I'm, I can't wait to see what this mock room is going to be because I keep hearing about it. So it'll be great to actually have that up and going and someone's going to have to have their phone and figure out the panorama.
I will.
You're on it.
I will not be your videographer. I would defer that to Dr. Willett.
If you have a VR headset, you'll be able to.
If you have a VR headset, you'll be able to stand in the whole space, so.
Okay, now you're taking it to a whole new level. I mean, you're used to the doodle pool, so.
Maybe we'll bring a GoPro in there or something.
Perfect. Um, I believe those are all the committees that have um within the timeframe. If I'm missing anyone, please let me know. If not, I will continue on. Okay. I do not have a chairperson's report, so we will go to uh board action and we will have K one, the ninety-one thirty. Discussion.
So just as a, just cue it up again, moving the board meetings from seven thirty to seven uh needs to be done as a board action revision to board policy thirty-one, uh sorry, ninety-one thirty. Um, and therefore it's offered to the Board of Education through the attached. The emotion would be motion to change the start time of the Board of Education meetings from seven thirty to seven and to amend ninety-one thirty accordingly. And that amendment ninety-one thirty would basically be um, basically be that the meetings are seven.
Christina Plord, motion to change the start time of the Board of Education meetings from seven thirty to seven PM and amend policy ninety-one thirty accordingly.
Jigamari second.
Now, discussion, um Claude, you have your hand up.
Oh, I didn't mean to, sorry.
Okay, it is time for board members, if you could raise your hand to discuss. No one? Okay. Then we will do a vote.
Sorry, Ashley, I'm slow to the punch. My apologies. Um, I just wanted to say, I know that that seven thirty was there um simply because of some of the working members on the committee um had said in the past of being able, when we're in board chambers, actually back in, I hate to say the real world or the world we knew it as before, it would be challenging. Um, I'm not gonna lie that it's gonna be a challenge. But I will say, like Tony said earlier, because of COVID, Zoom has happened, which has afforded a lot, several of us the opportunity who wouldn't necessarily be able to be on a meeting at a specific time or a place. They are so i- in a Zoom world, seven o'clock, you know, would be fine in in back in a normal world when we're in board chambers. Just seven thirty, seven thirty's tight for me. And again, I don't want to change the world for one person. We're nine. I just wanted to make sure I communicated that to you. And then, you know, we also have um, you know, a lot of the, a lot of feedback that I got from several parents in the community and families in the community. It was easier for them to attend if they were gonna attend in board chambers because they were able to get their kids dinner and and get them settled and then come on down, but just just some food for thought. Again, right now, everything is so different being on Zoom, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Um, any other board members at this time would like to speak? I'm gonna give everyone a minute because just in case. Okay, um, let's vote. Uh Karen?
Um, I'll say nay. I I think seven thirty is more doable for people trying to get families settled so they could get on the meeting.
Okay.
Nay.
Claude?
Aye.
I'm sorry, did you say Dana?
Yep.
Okay. Nay. Griffin?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Um, therefore, motion passes to change the board of meetings from seven thirty to seven. Okay, let's go to K two. The cleaning, green cleaning.
Christina Plord, proposed motion to approve the edge, oh, wrong one, I'm sorry. Proposed motion to amend board policy ten forty-one to include, what was projecting on the screen there? And after item five, add.
Okay, I think we need to verbally say it, though.
Okay. Um, motion, motion to amend board policy ten forty-one to include pursuant to subsection A two A of section ten dash two-three-one G of the Connecticut General Statutes, any disinfectant, disinfecting cleaner, sanitizer, or any other my antimicrobial, microbial product approved by federal law may be used by the Talon Board of Education. After item five and to add guidance regarding green cleaning requirements and coronavirus slash COVID nineteen Department of Administrative Services parentheses, March fi- fifth to twenty twenty, available at the following website.
Lisa, we'll have to make sure you get that PDF number.
Jigamari second.
After the listing. Sorry, go ahead, Jacob.
Okay, Jigamari second.
Okay, any uh board members at this time would like to speak? That's uh Dana?
I think my hand's still up from before.
Okay, any members would like to speak to the green cleaning? If not, we will go to the vote. Okay. Uh Karen?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Uh, Rini?
Aye.
Um, I as well, therefore this motion passes unanimously. Okay, let's do our uh Board of Education goals.
Christina Plord, proposed motion, motion to approve the Board of Education goals for twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one.
Rini B saw second.
Okay, uh, discussion, um Karen?
Um, yes, I think I saw in the packet, um, Dr. Willett, could you scroll up to the? Can we spell out Portrait of a Graduate? In number one, because I don't think anyone reading it is really not gonna know what that is.
Sure, I can, uh, when we publish them, I will spell out the POG.
And then I was also gonna request that it also gets put on our agendas going forward, like our other set of goals were.
I think that's gonna depend on how much space that uh the Zoom meeting takes up, because I don't want to go to two pages.
We're already.
We can short, yeah, but I mean, three pages, like this is an actual physical.
Third goal, Ashley, I think that it's appropriate to have them on our agendas so people know what our goals are all the time.
Uh, Dr. Willett, do you think that you can format it so that we're not going to three pages for an agenda?
Yeah, I I think probably what I can do is cut out all that Zoom phone number stuff and just have one local area, you know, as as local as possible phone number. So we could probably do that. Um, and I'll just cut out all the other Zoom info and just have the link and the code and the local area number.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need Germantown and Chicago and New York and X, Y, Z. Okay. Perfect. Um. Do I need to do an amendment for the spelling out of the P O G for the um Portrait of a Graduate? Or can we just do that?
I think you're, yeah, you're okay. You're just, you're accepting the goals. I'll at the, I'll make sure that Portrait of a Graduate is spelled out.
Okay. Any other discussion at this time? Okay, um, let's go to the vote, Karen.
Aye.
Kate? Kate?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Aye as well, therefore it passes unanimously. And let's go back to uh K four for the educational specifications document. Uh, let's do that.
Christina Plord, motion to approve the educational specifications document for the Birch Grove Primary School Foundation Project under renovate as new status as well as unsuitable soils and to accept and authorize this project to be executed.
Dana Philbin second.
Well, I need, go ahead, put, I put up an adjusted uh motion that does the same thing, but basically just explicitly talks to that unsuitable soils. And, you know, that then covering the language, mirroring the language that I see in the town council thing, so I wondered if maybe you'd want to consider putting this motion.
Oh, sorry, I was reading off of this wall, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, it's a.
So I'll go back and say motion, I'll take my motion back, rescind it.
So you're gonna withdraw? Do you have to, because now that we have it on the floor, you'd have to withdraw it and then redo it, so um you asked to withdraw your motion.
Can I withdraw my motion?
And then we'd have to have a discussion if anyone has a discussion. If not, then we have to vote and you have to have two thirds, so Karen?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Aye as well, therefore your motion is now withdrawn, so now you can make a new one.
Christina Plord, motion to approve the Ed Spec document for the Birch Grove Primary Project Code Violation in Unsuitable Soils Project, authorizing all necessary applications and waivers.
Jigamari second.
Okay, any discussion on this? If not, we will vote. Okay, Karen?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Tony? Jacob?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
Aye as well, therefore this passes unanimously. Okay. Um, let's move to public participation. At this time, uh, the comments must be limited to items on the agenda. And when you speak, if you could please leave um, say your first name, last name, and your address. And Tony will give you a thirty seconds queue when you have that left. Um, let's go to Kate Ballow.
Hi there, uh, Kate Ballow, A. Talon team. I just wanted to make a quick comment to thank Dr. Willett for his presentation on CRE. Um, I've had the pleasure of participating in some rich discussions around these topics with administrators and teachers. And I was deeply feeling a deep appreciation for the work that they're doing. It's heartening to hear that this work is ongoing and especially great to hear that the connections are being made with social emotional learning and emotional intelligence in the district, um as these are, you know, of course, inextricably intertwined. Um, I'm in strong support of continued exploration of these topics at the board level. And it is encouraging to hear that you guys are exploring these possibilities, so thank you for that. This district is just incredibly fortunate to have a superintendent that not only supports growth in the schools but does in the boardroom as well. So thank you, Dr. Willett and everyone.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's go to Colleen.
Hey, Ashley, um, it's Colleen Udaycheck, twelve, Blueberry Hill Road. Just a couple things. I first want to start off by thanking the teachers and staff. They've been very responsive to any questions and I think Mr. Poland, uh, Pollen, Poland, I'm sorry if I say his last name wrong, has been a um great at being the new principal. He's also very responsive um to when I email him and I'm sure he is with other parents as well. Um, I also wanted to um say the Wednesday is our great day for kids or students to follow up, just like the student reps have said earlier. Another thing is goals is also a good idea to have on the agenda. I just know the pass boards, we always had it on there, so we started our meeting. We can review our goals to ourselves and remind ourselves why we put those goals on there the first place. And finally, the last question's for Dr. Willett. Um, I was just wondering like seasons of changing from fall to winter, and I know a lot of kids get um asthma, so they may have a dry cough. So if they go to the nurse's office, how does the nurse distinguish um if it's just that? Or if they really think it's COVID, uh, I was just wondering if we might overreact if somebody actually coughs or sneezes or whatever it is, how the district is handling that. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. Um, let's go to Brenda.
Sorry, my mouse took off. Uh, Brenda Felussy, four Laurel Ridge Road. I want to make sure that my comments are being made as a parent and not as a member of the town council. Um, I just wanted to give a little perspective. When we were talking about Wednesdays, we didn't talk about what kind of break that allows for this remote learning students. I have a child who's one hundred percent remote learning, uh, because she has an autoimmune disorder. To have that one day where she is not sitting for the entire day in her bedroom on her computer is a great break. It uh, it allows her some flexibility. It also allows her some accountability in some self-growth, so that she's accountable for her own learning at that time. She's accountable for reaching out to the teachers. Um, that Wednesday allows her to get out of the day what she puts in. She, at the beginning of the year, was putting in minimal effort to finish her assignment and get it done. And I challenged her to try to find out how she can expand on what was given to her by her instructors, so that she can take um what was offered and explore her own learning path and engage in her, with her instructors um for a more enriching experience. And it has been a huge success for her. Um, she's growing. She is learning how to advocate for herself. She's learning how to um expand what is given to her by the, by her instructors. And I have to say that um, is, Dr. Willett, is her name Ashley, the, I have it written down, um, the person who you have as a liaison for the um remote learning parents, she's been phenomenal. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't open up her email to verify her name, but she's been a phenomenal help and resource to us. So Wednesday's excellent for remote learners. It gives them a break in their routine and their schedule. And it also gives them an opportunity to ex um grow as individual and independent learners, so thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Um, at this time, any other members of the public would like to make a comment, please raise your blue hand. If not, we will move on. Okay, let's go to uh points of information. Um, Dr. Willett, I don't know if you um want to respond to anything or?
Uh, I think Ms. Udaycheck had the question of how we handle if a, a student has asthma, um, something like that. So um, students that have um either, you know, either existing conditions or what we call an alternative diagnosis, you know, if a, if a child's coughing and it's part of asthma, uh typically a doctor will, uh, you know, will have provided, you know, an alternative diagnosis or there will be a a condition that the child has that would uh, that would create that situation. And so those that have those kinds of pre-existing conditions, you know, we know about it and a lot of times that that won't result in a child being out. However, if a child adds symptoms, you know, if there are added symptoms to that and those include, you know, fever, coughing, you know, the the indicators that could be what is called COVID-like symptoms. If that is added to what they're typically experiencing, um, you know, for an example, fatigue is another one. You know, if a, a child stayed up all night watching Saturday Night Live and then the next night stayed up all night, you know, stayed up most of the night and they're tired, they're, well, they're tired because of that experience and the nurse will ask them, you know, did you get to bed at a normal time? Did you experience trouble sleeping? Did you have, you know? And they'll determine whether those are due to something that occurred or is pre-existing or something like that. Or um, are they new? Are they, you know, are they COVID-like and are they new? Um, and if they are COVID-like and new, we have a protocol that we have to follow from the health districts where, you know, that would result in a child being, say, put out, you know, for a ten-day quarantine or isolation. So uh, they will look at all of the, you know, conditions around it and they will make a determination based on that.
May, thank you. Uh, let's go to. Thank you. Let's go to Karen.
Thanks, Ashley. I just have to pull up some questions, notes I had. After nearly seven years serving on the Tallinn Board of Education, I have made the difficult decision to resign effective immediately and upon receipt of my resignation letter by the town clerk. Advocating for the growth and well-being of children of all abilities in our community to help prepare them for the future has been my mission throughout my years, serving as a volunteer for Tallinn Public Schools. I have been privileged to be a steward of this community and our school system and honored to support our administrators and educators in our journey to serve Tallinn's youngest generation. Modeling responsibility, accountability, and passion has been core to my mission. Thinking back to my early days in our school system as an active PTO member and president while raising a young family, it was all about the kids, not just my kids, but everyone else's kids in our schools. How could we support our students, educators, and administrators to drive towards positive experiences and achievements? That's what inspired my initial passion and still does. And ironically, now as a parent of a child who has successfully gone through our school system and graduated, I feel even more qualified as a contributing member to the success of our students today than ever before. This journey has granted me years of experience and access to data, diverse perspectives, and deep discussions. Over the years, I valued the historical and institutional knowledge of veteran board members before me and learned from them. Whether Democrat, Republican, or Independent, we had deep discussions together with our superintendent and worked hard to build consensus among us. I am proud of that work and honored to have made a difference alongside them. If nothing else, I know that I served through principles over politics, through respect for our experts and not personal agendas. I would like to thank our superintendent, Dr. Walter Willett, for his tireless leadership, humility, and poise, no matter the challenge. I would like to thank our administrators, teachers, paraprofessionals, secretaries, counselors, nurses, custodians, cafeteria staff, and especially our students, for they are the ones who are my ultimate motivation to carry on. And to our student reps, past and present, I thank you for your dedication on the board as the voices for all of our students. Please continue to use your voices, for it is our youth that will lead us into the future. I wish you all good luck wherever your path takes you. I look forward to continuing to support our community and school system in other positive ways. Thank you, Tallinn, for your faith in my service. I hope you are listening to the words between the lines tonight. Lastly, I will just say that this decision did not come lightly. It goes against every fiber of my being not to fulfill my commitment to our community, to our superintendent, and to our students. So I say to the Tallinn community, I hope you are really listening to my message this evening. The narrative being built behind the scenes and on social media before the board can work together as a collective group is an insult to this work and an insult to our students and staff who are relying on us to make thoughtful decisions for our district. When our young adults are disappointed with the behavior of adults, again, I say, I hope Tallinn is listening. Thank you all.
Well, thank you very much for your service, Karen. Seven years is definitely nothing to laugh at. That's, you know, a very long time to give to your community. And I do thank you for all of that. I'm not sure what happens next in terms of what goes, but...
There's a there's a process.
I figured as much.
Continue on, but it was a really tough decision for me. And...
I'm sure it wasn't. I'm sure it was not an easy decision. I'm sure, you know, you definitely provide a lot of information and, you know, it's, as you know, for seven years of providing your time, it's a lot and it's not going to be well. But I do thank you for everything.
I appreciate that. I have a lot of passion for the Tallinn community over the years. Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three years now I've lived in Tallinn and it's a great place to live. I hope we can move forward. I would pass my pass on to Kate Howard Bender or if you want to take the others first. I think Kate had her hand up, but I should just took it down. That's right. Anyway, thank you. And I'm sorry it was a long meeting and we're doing this now, but...
Well, thank you. Okay. Plord?
It feels weird to say this now. Karen, I'm sorry to see you go. I know we haven't always gotten along. We battle at the table sometimes, but anyways, just to address the health concern that Colleen brought up, when I was on the COVID meeting, they had said, some of the administrators had said that there's a lot of kids staying home that don't need to stay home. And I just wanted to point anyone listening that there is a virtual health room that I believe Dr. Willett set up or somebody set up that you can assess your child at home with and then keep in touch with the nurse. And that's been working because when kids go remote and the teacher doesn't expect that them to go remote, it creates more work for the staff going back and forth. And like Dr. Willett said, if the child can be in school, it's better for them.
Okay, Dana?
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Karen, for your thoughtful words and for all the service that you have provided. The Tallinn Public Schools and the entire community and the students of Tallinn, you will be greatly missed on the Board of Education. You've served as a great mentor for myself as well as many others who are, I'm sure, are would be approaching this endeavor in the future. So thank you. I did want to address Ms. Felusi's conversation about the Wednesdays and my apologies for missing the COVID conversation. But just one thing that I wanted to kind of tack on to what Ms. Felusi said was what I've found on the remote days and the feedback that I've heard is a lot of the teachers, at least in the younger grades, are reaching directly out to the remote students who don't necessarily have that one-on-one time in the classroom or that close teacher interaction in the classroom. So they've taken upon themselves to have it, whether it be an individual Zoom for 30 minutes, or they have a more relaxed Zoom or meets or whatever, where they can meet with students that are struggling on a specific topic or things like that. So that definitely is quite helpful on the Wednesdays for, like you said, the students to regroup and kind of format their own day and really reach out to their respective educator to ensure that happens to continue their education on their path. So thank you, Ms. Felusi, for your additional comments. And again, thank you, Karen, for your for your service. Thank you. Thank you, Ashley.
Let's go to Jacob.
I just wanted to thank Karen for all of her time up on the board. You know, only having been on here for less than a year, it's definitely a challenge. Sometimes it feels like an unpaid job at times. And to go for seven years, that's real dedication to the community. And I wish you well in your future endeavors.
Let's go to Rini.
I just want to echo kind of what Jacob said and others, Karen. I wish you the best. It's unfortunate. We're kind of just getting started with the negotiations and I know your historical knowledge is very helpful and, you know, we'll miss you despite the fact that we don't always all see eye to eye on everything. I think you lend a good voice and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Toni?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in and thank Karen as well for her for service. I mean, the time that I've gotten on this term and then reading minutes and previous previous minutes from earlier years show that your passion is obvious. For the students is an amazing thing and I appreciate it and sincerely hope that you'll continue to be a resource for those of us that are still here. Thank you.
I'm sorry to say, guys, I will not be going away.
Good. Stay.
I still have a child in high school.
I just wanted to echo everybody's else, you know, thanking you, Karen. I know this past year for me has been just overwhelming. There's just a lot. So thank you for the seven years you have put in because if like we haven't always agreed, but I know firsthand that you are very passionate and you care a lot about these schools and this community. So I have full faith that you will still be a good resource. And no, you will not be going anywhere. And I look forward to still having some conversations with you and I wish you the best in, you know, wherever your public service life takes you.
Karen, you've been a mentor. You are amazing. You already know that. Dear Tallinn community, thank you for trusting me to serve you as a member of your Board of Education. At this time, I regret to inform you that I will be resigning from my position as a Board of Education member effective tomorrow. I will be sending this letter to Ms. Palumbo tonight, and it is my expectation that after reading it in full, my entire letter will be placed in the board's minutes. I sincerely hope that I have served you well these past two years and I come to you with a heavy heart. I had hoped that my 23 years as a public educator, during which I assumed the responsibility of ensuring that my students had what they needed to be successful both academically and personally, would help me to be of service to the children of Tallinn. The Republican supermajority's goal of supporting 21st century skills would have required proactive planning with regard to intervention, curriculum staffing, and perhaps most importantly, access to technology. The Board of Education majority has expected education funding to come from anywhere else except for the Board of Education budget. The students of the town of Tallinn are dependent upon the generosity of outside agencies or the respective wealth of their own family. Under Chairperson Lundgren's and Vice Chair Plord's leadership, the board has not asked the educational experts the most essential question, what do the children of Tallinn need in order to be successful? There is no big picture understanding of the needs and priorities of Tallinn Public Schools upon which the board should base all of its decisions, including the creation of the budget. Instead, the rhetoric has been, where else can we cut? Through budget season, Dr. Willett facilitated the yearly workshops and the board engaged in multiple budget discussions. Not one member of the Republican supermajority missed any of these budget sessions during which the board members deliberated over minute details to no significant financial advantage. Dr. Willett found savings when he negotiated with insurance agents. A Board of Education should advocate for the needs of the children with the town council. Instead, your chair and vice chair have allowed the town council to dictate the next moves. At the last joint session before the pandemic hit, instead of advocating for the approved Board of Education budget, Chairperson Lundgren and Vice Chair Plord simply deferred to the town council to further pick apart the Board of Education's budget. Neither chair nor vice chair attended the town council meeting last night on October 27th to advocate for the school system's capital projects. Chairperson Lundgren is not fulfilling the responsibility of representing the full 15,000 town residents. This Board of Education has been used as a tool to avoid costs at all costs at the expense of students' needs, academic, social, emotional, athletic, inclusion, educational, tools, material, and all. I blame the chair and the vice chair for the fact that our district was unprepared to transition to distance learning with only enough individual devices to serve 43% of our students. This was due to their short-sighted mismanagement and micromanagement. It is not reasonable for the board to expect that parents spend hundreds of dollars to supply their children with the tools to access their education, especially during a pandemic. Dr. Willett suggested a one-on-one, one-to-one device initiative early in the budget year, but it was not prioritized by the Republican leadership. Dr. Willett warned the board of Education about potential device supply chain issues, upon which the leadership took no action. When the pandemic hit, Republican leadership waited for someone else to solve the device problem instead of collaboratively seeking out solutions. The device deficit was addressed by state grants that Dr. Willett wrote and a sizable donation from TEPTO. The narrative of fiscal minimalism promoted by the chair and vice chair, combined with the back-to-basics orientation, have directly and negatively impacted our students. This Board of Education majority is solely motivated to reduce the mill rate versus ensuring quality schools as articulated by their duties in Connecticut State Statute 10220. In November 2019, once the Republican supermajority voted themselves into the chair and vice chair positions, Chairperson Lundgren offered some words at our initial meeting, saying that discussions are needed as some of the best ideas come from different people collaborating. These discussions need to take place civilly so all voices are heard. I agree with her. Democracy only works when all voices are heard. However, the Republican majority began our term with a partisan agenda and pre-prescribed outcomes undercutting democracy. There has been no real discussion or hearing all voices. Evidence quickly began accumulating that the board's supermajority is not interested in hearing anyone's voices other than their own. The sole leadership position offered to Democrats was offered to a brand-new member of the board. Though the member's skills are multitudinous, offering a leadership seat to the least veteran Democratic member demonstrated the new Republican leadership's unwillingness to include the voice and expertise of a returning member who previously served as vice chair. When the curriculum committee was added to the Board of Education, as a professional educator with decades of experience evaluating and implementing curriculum, I hope to lead the committee. It was clear to me, however, that the Republican leadership had different plans for their committee. It was only after I sent my resume and my professional and educational background and requested a meeting with Chairperson Lundgren that the chairperson relented and appointed me the chair of the curriculum committee. I still wonder which other member Ms. Lundgren might have appointed to this chairpersonship, whether it be the UConn student, the accountant, or the pharmaceutical sales representative. These occupations do not prepare a person to oversee and make curricular decisions or recommendations for a school district. The fact that the board majority assumes that they can make these decisions without the education and training that the superintendent and his staff possess is a sign of the pervasive disrespect for educators that seems to run through the Republican majority. Those who do not agree with the Republican supermajority are ignored or repudiated. In January and February of 2020, the board received communication from 195 residents in support of Dr. Willett's proposed budget, combined with a majority of public participants supporting the budget, as opposed to seven residents who requested a lower budget. Your voices as constituents were ignored, and the supermajority plodded on, scrutinizing, second guessing, and opposing each detail of Dr. Willett's proposed budget, leading to another reduction in staff and services. Disagreement is often labeled pushback and is quietly quieted by a cacophony of seemingly synchronous Republican voices. This recurring tactic of discrediting or discounting voices contradicts Chairperson Lundgren's original plea to engage the community, hoping that we get correspondence from a variety of people. One can only conclude that she wants correspondence from people who share her views. While the budget sessions had perfect Republican attendance, four of the nine board members attended TPS's Voices From Our Schools discussion, with a solitary Republican board member in attendance. This occurred in the wake of national equity demonstrations and after the board received a diversity, equity, and inclusion petition signed by 358 residents in July. Students, parents, residents, and members of this board have repeatedly requested action, but there are still no Republican leadership-driven inclusion or diversity agenda items. Dr. Willett has continued this lifesaving work, engaging former and current students in discussions and community-based initiatives promoting equity and inclusion. The Republican leadership recently asked him, and tonight, to present this information, further abdicating their responsibility for taking action on inclusion and equity. The Democratic minority was promised good communication, but we are informed of the agenda items only after it has been officially published. items only after it has been officially published. The Republican leadership team has not given Ms. Moran, Ms. Philbin, or, or me the opportunity to contribute to the board's agenda. The Democratic minority has been subject to a calculated structural and procedural marginalization. Furthermore, this marginalization has led to the systematic disenfranchisement of community members. Our multiple attempts to lend our voices to the discussion have gone unanswered or ignored by the chair and vice chair. My involvement in the Board of Education meetings has become futile. Building consensus among divergent perspectives is another hallmark of democracy. I learned that the Board of Education should act with one voice. The board should have determined goals earlier in our term, at the beginning of our term, so that we can work together toward a common cause and to nurture that one voice. I'm glad to see these goals have finally been approved and I strongly urge the Board of Education to use them as guideposts going forward. Seemingly unaware of their roles and responsibilities, the Republican supermajority does not demonstrate any appreciation for the vast expertise and historical knowledge of Dr. Willett. A Board of Education has one direct report employee, the superintendent, and the chair and vice chair should engage him in constructive, student-centered interactions, yielding ever better results for the students of Talon. The chair and vice chair are supposed to support the superintendent in his role of running the district efficiently and effectively, not to assign additional unreasonable, time-consuming demands or to interrupt his attempt, his attempts to run our district on the shoestring budget that they demand. Chairperson Lundgren suggested to all of us that we should listen to understand, not simply to reply, and I agree. Asking tough questions is absolutely part of the role of elected officials. The supermajority often claims that they are asking the tough questions about the town's resources. However, when they receive the answer to these questions, replete with the supporting evidence, they have a responsibility to familiarize themselves with the answers and evidence. Instead of listening and learning, the Republican majority of this board has peppered Dr. Willett with repetitive and/or uninformed questions. Chairperson Lundgren requested that we be kind and patient with one another. I would point to the year-long litany of examples of lack of civility and kindness perpetrated by members of the Republican caucus to me, to Ms. Moran, intermittently to Ms. Philbin, and to, and to Superintendent Willett. I point to the personal attack that I endured on social media by Vice Chair Plor, which I attempted to mediate with Ms. Plor to be essentially dismissed, or the email harassment by Ms. Griffin's husband. I brought both of my concerns to Chairperson Lundgren to no avail. Despite having a supermajority on the Board of Education, Vice Chair Plor regularly espouses a victim narrative that she is giving the voice to the unheard, which is especially absurd and insulting to those of us who have been paying attention. In the past year, Vice Chair Plor regularly hearkened back to the previous boards, stating that she was an outlier and was unheard or dismissed. Surprisingly, she has not used that experience of feeling unheard to ensure that the minority voices are heard during this term. The policy committee attempted to address civility issues with the civility clause. There were some very good ideas in this clause. However, I saw no point in adopting the final version of the clause because the final version was poorly engineered. It contained neither accountability measures nor any social media stipulations. The chair and vice chair could have used this clause as an opportunity to build consensus and buy-in from the entire board. Instead, it was another, yet another power play and it was approved without consensus in a vote of four to three, following an extended discussion which distracted us again from our primary purpose, discussing and ensuring the needs of students. The most egregious example of the supermajority's personal agendas superseding the constituents' needs was a, three separate communications sent to state officials, including the governor and the commissioner of education. These communications questioned a superintendent's role in making the final decision about returning to school during the pandemic. That was determined to be legal based on caucus rules. I believe this move was sneaky and unethical. Vice Chair Plor stated at our first meeting that a lot of our business will be done in this boardroom and she assured that leadership will reach out to the minority representation when needed. I can assure you that the Democratic minority was not afforded the opportunity to weigh in on this extremely important issue. Through these actions, these six elected officials seemingly circumvented the public requirement of their role and they undermined the superintendent and the authority of the board as a whole. In open session in front of you, the Board of Education voted overwhelmingly to approve Dr. Willett's community-supported, partial-in-person plan. The supermajority's subsequent electronic communications to state officials again disenfranchised the Democratic members of the Board of Education and the residents of Talon. Their letters did not relay the one voice that your board should communicate, making their eye votes appear utterly disingenuous. I anticipate that this letter will be dissected, rehashed, and spun by all the various players to fill, fit the narratives of the supermajority. I hope that the board directs their collective representative energy to advocating for our students' needs instead. Thank you to the teachers, administrators, and support staff who do more than their fair share to make the schools work for our kids. I see you and I support you. I would like to thank Dr. Willett for his tireless service to the children, staff, and families of Talon. My departure is wholly due to the poor Republican leadership of this Board of Education and is no reflection on Dr. Willett whatsoever. My voice is not valued by the Republican members of the Board of Education. I cannot fulfill the responsibility for which I was elected, given the dysfunction of this Board of Education. I ask that we, as the residents of Talon, hold our elected officials accountable for the following four things. One, the town council should cooperate with the Democratic Town Committee to appoint new Democratic members to the Board of Education. Given how quickly the vacant town council seat was filled, precedence for swift action has been set. Failure to move quickly would be further confirmation that the Republican supermajorities in town are not interested in the people who are represented by Democratic elected officials. Two, the curriculum, the curriculum committee should be disbanded until a curriculum director or assistant superintendent is hired. Three, as two members, as two new members join the Board of Education, this could be an opportunity for the supermajority to diversify leadership and committee membership on the board in order to more fully represent Talon and to represent that they, and to demonstrate that they are willing to work with their Democratic colleagues. Four, as budget season again commences, all Board of Education members must stay laser-focused on their roles, prioritizing the needs of Talon students and the newly minted goals as a touchstone. Once the budget is sent, is set, then the town council should do their due diligence to fund quality education. Thank you to the parents and students of the Talon Public Schools for your confidence. I am truly humbled by the positive feedback and constructive support that I have received. I apologize for not finishing my term. I ask that we all stay engaged to encourage and support our board members to fulfill their duties and responsibilities to us, the citizens of Talon. I wish you all continued health and I remind you of Lyndon Bane Johnson's words, "That education is not a problem, education is an opportunity." "The main hope of a nation lies in the proper education of its youth," says Erasmus. Our kids are depending on all of us to guide them through to becoming the best possible versions of themselves. Let us too be the best role models we can be. Most sincerely, Kate Howard Bender, former Board of Education member, mother, high school administrator, teacher, community member. Be well.
I'm sorry that you feel that way, Kate, and thank you for all your service that you've done. And she's not okay. Summer?
I would just like to thank Ms. Moran and Howard Bender for everything you have done. You're an inspiration to me and hopefully, one day I can have a tremendous positive effect you have had on this community. Both of you had made me feel so welcomed and I don't think thank you is enough for everything you've done.
Thank you, Summer. I appreciate that. Good luck to you and school. I'm sure you're gonna do wonderfully. Thank you for your voice.
Alexandra?
I just want to like kind of repeat that. Thank you so much to both of you for your service. You've really been an inspiration to me. I'm so grateful that you really, truly consider students when you've been making decisions. We're gonna really miss you.
Thanks, Alexandra. Good luck to you too with all the college stuff. You're gonna be great.
At this time, would any other board members have anything to say? Let's go to Dina.
Thank you. And it seems like Kate has popped off, but I just want to mimic the words that I said to Karen. Hopefully Kate's listening in, in virtual land or what have you. But they've been great mentors. They've been great leaders for this community and I only hope to continue listening and hearing our constituents and, and fighting for all of Talon students and all of Talon's constituents. And they have paved a path and, and a great, they've been great role models for what a board member in a, a volunteer for the community should look like. And so, again, I thank you for your passion, your dedication, and your time that you've spent serving the Talon community. So, thank you. And Summer and Alexandra beautifully spoken this evening. Thank you for your kind words.
Thanks, Dana.
So at this point, Dr. Willett, do you want to go through the future agenda items or the bottom?
So, future agenda items, we have, you know, ongoing equity and CRE efforts, you know, bringing the board into those now and having the board do those kinds of activities and reflections. School rounds and tours, you know, as soon as we can work out the rest of the, you know, the COVID situations around it, we'll, we'll continue to do maybe some tours like we had done before for, you know, for TMS. You know, we did a virtual rounds, so maybe we'll add a couple of virtual rounds in there. The mental health services initiatives and presentation, we were going to put that on this agenda, but we knew that it was a very heavy agenda, so that was going to be moved off till next time or a, a meeting coming up soon. So I'd be happy to and will continue to gather information to provide to the board, much like I did tonight for CRE. School bus stop safety, portrait of graduate pathways, and understanding by design, all of these things. You know, we, we are in the process of continuing to work and, and there'll be a presentation next week or soon after, I'm sorry, not next week, one of the upcoming meetings in November for the ELA, you know, presentation by Barb Daly Burns, who is our ELA supervisor, a wonderful professional administrator and educator. And she'll be coming to, you know, to enlighten us on, on English language arts in the district. So these are the, the most, you know, most prominent things on our radar for the future.
Perfect. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Jacob, Mari, I move that we adjourn the October 28th regular Board of Education meeting at 10:55 PM.
Christina Plor, second.
Any discussion? A vote. Karen, you still get to vote. Why don't you vote anyways, just in case?
Aye. Yes.
Proud and proud. There you go. Plor?
Aye.
Dina?
Aye.
Griffin?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Rini?
Aye.
I as well, therefore are, we will adjourn at 10:55. Thank you, everybody. Have a good one.